Okay, as we get settled in here, I want to welcome each and every one of you to the February the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting. And at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And happy all of you are here. Looks like we have attracted a pretty good crowd tonight. I'm sure we'll get down to business here in a little while and hopefully everybody will go home. We'll all live to see another day, but with the grace of God, I'm sure it'll all work out just fine. But at this time, I am going to ask Commissioner Larry Johnson if he would be kind enough to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
All right, let me pause. As we tend to be in humble prayer this night, at the beginning of this Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting, we thank thee, Father in heaven, for this opportunity to get. We thank thee for the laws of this land that requires us to meet often and to discern and decide, plan what's best for the citizens of Surrey County. We're thankful for the leadership of the county. We're thankful for the staff and all of its employees. We're thankful for our freedom to choose, to vote, to make wise decisions. We're thankful for those that protect us here on this county, state, nation, and the world. We bless, ask thee to bless those that protect our freedom, take us in our safety. Thank thee for all those that are here this night, for their very stories for coming, and that they may, that they will see the hand of the laws of the land and decision-making made this night. We pray for this leading, and we dedicate it unto thee in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, moving right along, and I would like to say, welcome tonight, Howard Jones. Howard works for the county on a lot of our issues, and we're happy to have you. And I also want to say that Ed Wolts is with us tonight, but he is joining by way of Zoom. And I guess our connection is up and running. He's good? All right. Hello, Ed. All right, you have all had a chance to look at your packet. And so I'm going to ask for someone to be kind enough to approve the agenda before us tonight. Looking for a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Goins. Have a motion. Looking for a second? Commissioner Marion, any discussion? No discussion? Motion is, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Also, in your packet, you will see the meeting minutes of February the fifth. And they are printed here before you. I'm sure you've read through them all. And I am looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February the fifth. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Mark Marion, looking for a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye?
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, and tonight, we have a fairly lengthy consent agenda. It's all listed out here in the subtitles, but for full transparency and to know exactly what it is, we are about to consent to, I'm going to ask County Manager Chris Knopf to go over each and every one of the items in here. And I will ask you gentlemen or entertain your request to pull out any one or two or individual items and speak of those items before we consent. So if you want to do that, now is your time. If not, Commissioner, Chris, I'm going to ask for you to go over the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item are the Tax Department end-of-month summaries, charges, and reports. Next is an amendment to the two thousand and twenty-four board calendar. This will be to hold the May sixth meeting in Mount Airy. Next is a Duke energy easement along property the county owns on Old Westfield Road. This is Pilot Middle School. The county actually owns this property due to debt service that's currently being paid. Next is an ambulance franchise renewal for Elkin Rescue Squad. They provide BLS services for Hugh Chatham Health. Next are position reclassifications in health, parks and rec, and human resources. Next is the renewal of a property lease. This is for the Dockery Garage here in Dobson, Sheriff's Department uses. Next are the approval of closed session minutes from previous meetings. Next is the approval of partnerships for the Running of the Vines, which will take place this spring. Next is Budget Amendment Number Seven submitted by the Finance Office. Next item is a grant execution agreement. This is on behalf of the Mount Airy Surrey County Airport. And finally, the final item is to ask the board to reject all of the bids received for the Parks and Recreation Building at Fisher River Park, each one due to unresponsiveness. We need to allow those entities to resubmit.
Okay, I will ask on that one item, what, what do you mean unresponsiveness? How many bidders responded and how many did not? I want to have so the audience out in cyberland can hear this.
One of the bidders was extremely high. One did not submit the proper documentation. And I forget what the third one was, why it wasn't responsive. Denise Law, I think, referenced. Yeah, there were no references.
Okay. All right, and gentlemen, any questions? Any comments? Any concerns? If not, I am looking for a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented by County Manager Chris Knopf.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is. Do I have a second? Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Harris, a second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
And the consent agenda has been approved unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving right along, now's the time for our open forum section of the meeting. Open forum is a time when citizens have the opportunity to come before the board and to say about what's on your mind concerning hopefully county business. Most anything goes as long as we stay within some reasonable boundaries. And I will remind you, tonight, we do have a rezoning item that is coming that I feel sure, looking at the crowd, has drawn in some of you folks. And I'll remind you, if your comments are going to be directed toward the rezoning, that if you will, hold that to a later time, and we will have a time in this meeting or to have you talk about that. We will have a public hearing, and you will be happily invited to make your comments at that time. But any other comments except involving the rezoning would be appropriate now. So if you have anything on your minds, any takers, please come up now. Yes, ma'am. And if you will, please come up, state your name and your phone number. Yes, ma'am. How are you doing? Hello?
Hello, gentlemen. I'm Kellen Wilson Withers. My number is three, three, six, four, zero, one, zero, eight, nine, zero. So, um, I was a foster parent for three years back eight years ago, ended up adopting my kids. And, um, and for the last six years, I have worked as a, um, I've worked as a youth minister for at-risk kids mainly in the Flat Rock area. So I have dealt with the Department of Social Services, CPS, and foster care and adoption from almost every angle. And I've been really concerned about the lack of services that are being offered in Surrey County for years. But I finally called about a particularly difficult case to the state. And I said, what are we supposed to do? Who does the buck stop with when it comes to these services being offered? And they said, don't talk to us. Talk to your county commissioners. So here I am, because I didn't know that this was our job. So, um, anyway, I went and I spoke to Ms. Irving, the new director that you hired, who is doing amazing things. And I asked her, what is it that is your biggest hurdle? And she said, we just don't have the people, which I already knew because I know a number of social workers along the years who have quit. I know what the intense turnover is. They have a very hard time in foster care and adoption and CPS, keeping workers for more than a year, which means they train them, they put the resources into them, then they turn over, then they got to find new people. But it becomes an even bigger problem because they don't have enough. And so then they're overworked. And she said that she thinks that the thing that would help the most is if we could offer competitive salaries with our neighboring counties, which I was not aware was a problem. So I looked up my sweet little bar graph that I gave you. The references are on the bottom, if that's something you want to check. But we are indeed paying less than all the surrounding counties. You'll see that Forsyth County is an outlier, understandably. But the ones close to us, we're not far behind Stokes, but we're still behind. We also don't have a great reputation for the last many years. Things are turning around. But we have to put a little extra effort into getting the social workers we need. And it's exceptionally important because they're overworked, because there's not enough of them. Then they can't offer the services. Then they get piled upon. So, and then it's really hard for foster parents to work with a county that's not offering all of the services, and then we don't have enough foster parents. So I am pleading with you to please seriously consider this salary issue for our CPS and Child Protective Services social workers. Because right now CPS, I think, only has one or two. Foster care is down by like three workers, and that's a serious liability problem. So that's what I'm here for.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Do you need me, or can I leave now?
You are permitted to go.
All right. Well, you have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Thank you, Helen. All right, anyone else for open forum? No takers? All right. At this time, we will close our section of the meeting for open forum. And with that next on the agenda, I will cordially invite up Sheriff, the Honorable High Sheriff Steve Hyatt. And Sheriff, you come along and feel free to bring anyone or no one, just have your way here. So go right ahead, Sheriff.
I may, I may call on some of them here shortly. But good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. And we have a couple of matters on the agenda. And first, we have been the Detention Center Medical Care Services Request for Proposal, RFP. Denise has worked really hard to draft this document. And the Chief Deputy, the Jail Administrator, myself have reviewed it. And, um, and I want to just express my gratitude to the County Management, the Finance, our Health Director Samantha, and the Sheriff's Office staff. Our current contract with Southern Health Partners ends on June thirtieth. You all should have a copy of that RFP in your packet, I think. Okay. The RFP includes both required and suggested language as recommended by the County Health Director Samantha. Once the RFP is approved, the proposal will be disseminated to all medical providers currently serving jails in North Carolina, as well as any other health provider upon request. Denise has recommended that a group consisting of members of the Sheriff's Office, the Finance, and County Management to review these proposals, and that the County Health Director review and approve the medical plan. I believe this RFP represents a positive step forward, and I hope for a unanimous agreement. Thank you for your consideration. If you have questions regarding this request document, I'd like to ask Denise to come forward. She can probably answer for sure any question better than I.
Just in case Denise, come on. Hey Denise, how are you? Gentlemen? I see you're still looking at your RFP and...
I read over the RFP, and I thought it all looked really good. And thank you Denise for putting this together. And as far as that goes, I'd like to make a motion to go forward and send out the RFP for the medical services.
A gentleman have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can you enter, would, would the Commissioner, there's a couple of items in here I would like to discuss well once specifically. Or, or you can go ahead and call for a second, and we'll have discussion, and, you know, I just may have to...
In that order, I have a motion on the floor for Mr. Mark Marion to entertain the option of agreeing to the RFP. I'm looking for a second. Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on page three, down about two-thirds of the way down, it says, "The county encourages participation by small, minority, comma, and women-owned businesses." Surrey County reserves the right at its sole discretion to waive any informalities, comma, to reject any and slash or all proposals, and to accept any proposal which in its opinion may be in the best interest of the county. Now, this county has never discriminated against anyone in my time here. And I bring this up in light of the DEI scourge that is flown across our nation. And I don't know that this, we don't need to be in the business of encouraging anyone to participate in these RFPs. It is a free country. We completely abide by all title civil rights law and the titles that are applicable to that, to encourage that anyone is not discriminated against this county. And I don't know that we ought to be in the business of doing this. This is, uh, if we, why, why would we encourage a specific gender or race or ethnicity to apply for this contract? It just flies in the face of common sense to me. We treat everyone equally. And the Supreme Court has recently ruled that affirmative action, which this smells like affirmative action to me in a veiled sort of sense, has ruled is unconstitutional. And I just don't think it ought to be in there. And I'm, I would like the county attorney to weigh in on this.
Are you saying we not only, you'd rather have it say, we not only invite small minority and woman-owned businesses, but large, non-minority, any owned business, but we want to be inclusive to everyone? And we invite everyone and anyone that...
Well, it's a free country. Anyone, we don't need to be in business of encouraging, anyone can apply for this.
I'm playing the devil's advocate, and I tend to agree with you, Commissioner.
And I'm interested to hear what the county attorney has to say about it.
I think the language is surplus. I think it can be omitted without any problem.
Committed and substituted with anything else?
No, no. I think, I think that the, the language of the request for proposal is clear, and it's seeking bids from qualified applicants regardless of anything. So I, I, I don't disagree that it can be omitted.
Okay, thank you, sir. How do we admit it? We've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Can we get the original motion modified?
I will be glad to amend my motion and leave out the first sentence. Where is it at? I just lost it.
Page three.
Or the whole, or the...
Participation by small minority and woman-owned businesses. I'll redo my motion to omit that sentence.
Commissioner Harris? That satisfying to you?
Satisfies me, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion that has been, we have a motion, and it has been amended to say that we want to approve this RFP tonight with the omission of the section on page three that describes the folks and the parties that we will be encouraging to apply for this RFP proposal. And that will be eliminated, the sentence that's aforementioned about the county encouraging participation by small minority and woman, minority and woman-owned businesses. I'm sure the intent is we won't encourage those and everyone else, hopefully, but not just those. So with that omission, and with that motion?
You may, you may, you may need to reaffirm your second.
I did. It's Commissioner Goins, seconds again. Any, any more discussion? There being no more discussion, I'm looking for, you good, Mr. Johnson?
I can say thank you after we vote.
Okay, with no, any other discussion, questions? No more discussion, no more questions, have a motion on the floor and a second? All in favor of approving the request for proposals for the inmate medical services? Let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sheriff, you want to continue? You have...
Yes, sir. I have a thing.
Thank you, Denise.
Yes, our second matter on the agenda is regarding immediate temporary remedy for our officers working in the detention center. This matter has already been discussed previously in an open board meeting approximately a year ago, maybe. At that time, we recommended twenty or twenty-one additional employees and as we anticipated, the opening of the new detention center. The board approved at that time five positions with the understanding that further staffing adjustments would be considered once we transitioned to the new facility. We successfully transferred all inmates to the new detention center on December the sixteenth. Sooner than expected, we have been, we have seen a significant increase in our inmate count since moving into the new facility. Prior to December move, we averaged one hundred and seventy-seven in-house. Since December sixteenth, we have averaged two hundred and forty-seven inmates daily. We reached a one-day high or a period high of two hundred and seventy-nine inmates. Last week, we moved twenty-seven inmates to the North Carolina Department of Corrections. Our count today is two hundred and fifty-nine, two hundred males and fifty-nine females. Today, as another term of Superior Court begins, it would not be uncommon for the inmate count to start rising again. Additional staffing is crucial for the proper and safe operations of the detention center. Each shift is operating with the bare minimum required to meet state rules and sheriff's office policies. To comply with state and federal requirements, it is very important. One reason being liability concerns for me as the sheriff, as well as for Surrey County. All currently allotted detention positions are filled at this time. Tonight, I'm requesting six positions, four detention officers and two administrative assistant employees. This would be employees who would work the information center in the detention lobby. The two administrative assistant clerks would work during peak times, seven days a week, most likely nine A to four thirty P, if granted. Areas of the detention center needing additional officers are the upper tower, which is designed for two officers. We only have one in there currently. The kitchen and laundry, no officer currently assigned, need an officer assigned, particularly during day shift. Medical, we have no officer assigned as an escort. The current duty is being handled by officers assigned to housing. And then legal visitation, we have no escort officer. That duty is currently being handled by officers assigned to booking or housing. I think that's our jail administrator, Randy Shelton, to come up and maybe explain some of those duties if you have any questions where we need additional help. Would please? Any questions on any of those things I mentioned? Sorry, sir. Just any questions for our jail administrator concerning...
Gentlemen, any questions for jail administrator?
I have one for Lieutenant Shelton. In our past conversations, whether they were in public or whatever, while the detention center was being built, somebody, somebody kind of remembered that really the state really didn't have no exact number that was required. Is that a correct statement, or do they have something that we have to, guideline that we have to meet?
Concerning inmate officer ratio, or I'm not sure what...
The number of detention officers that we have, for some reason, I remember it being said that the state, you know, really didn't have a certain exact number that we had to have for the detention center. Am I wrong? And I can, I remember that?
Well, that's first, but I mean, all the research I've done, it's up for, up for opinion. You can, you, I can, I've looked and researched for several years now on that topic, and I think it's a wide range of things. You know, I don't, I don't see where they do specifically say, but you may not...
That was my concern, and then you said federal also. So I'm just, you know, where's a certain number there that's, that is required by the powers that have more control than we do.
Right. When I mentioned that, I'm sorry, I wasn't talking about the officer inmate ratio. I was just talking about guidelines that we have to abide by.
Okay.
Where our detention center, yeah.
The answer is probably up to y'all's discretion, how many employees you have there at the detention center. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, or up to y'all.
Well, we, you, you...
Only thing I would add to that, there is a, in the general statutes on running the jail, that officers assigned to security rounds has to be met, and we can't assign them any other duties that, that would keep them from doing their rounds. that, that would keep them from doing their rounds.
It's assigned by state.
And that's where the state jail inspector would do an assessment, are we meeting those with staffing?
Well, also, Sheriff, this is your department. We, we don't tell you how to run your department.
Absolutely.
We, 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 we'll, we'll make, we'll furnish the necessary means to such as that, but. I, I just. And also. I mean, how often, how often, do you have a lot of people coming into the lobby all the time? I mean, I, I have no idea.
Well, every time I've been down there since it's been built, there's been several people in there for various reasons, but you may have more.
It, it is, it's a busy, especially Superior Court week, but daily it's busy because you've got bondsmen that comes through there. You got civilians that comes to bond people out or ask questions. So, and it's going to get even busier when the masteries come in and that, because they will come there to ask where to go to.
Was it any different than when you was in the, the prior jail? As far as the. People coming in?
I'd say we, same, it, obviously it increases because our inmate population has increased.
Well, every time, I mean, not, I don't know what went on over there, but all the times I were there, when gun permitting used to be required, that was what was causing the lobby to be full, but that is somewhat gone away. And alleviated itself with the new general assembly requirements, has it not, Sheriff? I mean, that's not something that clogs us up every day.
Yes, that's true. Now, that's sheriff's office lobby.
Yeah, sheriff's office lobby, yeah.
I'm referring to the.
Yeah, but you were, you referring to only the positions. I know these people will be working in the jail, but they would be exclusively working at the jail, not clerical anywhere else.
Right.
There's, I found, add this, there's another part to the jail we've not opened up yet. They would be required for, and that's public visitation to inmates. And we, we've not opened that because we don't have staffing doing it. But that's where they go sit in front of a monitor and the inmate in the housing area will sit in front of a monitor and they can do their visitation.
All right, gentlemen, any other, go, jump in, Commissioner Harris?
Yes, could you remind me again what that staff inmate ratio is that is required at a minimum by the state of North Carolina?
There is no problem.
There is no requirement?
Not where it states X amount of inmates versus how many officers.
In, in this document here on the cover sheet, it says. That each shift is operating with the bare minimum required to meet state rules. And sheriff's office policies affecting routine rounds and checks. Required to meet state rules, bare minimum. What, what does that mean, sir?
The requirement of the rounds.
Okay, so that's, there is no prisoner staff ratio. I was always under the understanding that there, that you all had told us once upon a time, there was a certain number that, that inmates to staff ratio.
We have to give y'all numbers from other jails, what they ratio was. There is no state or federal.
So when you say each shift is operating with the bare minimum required to meet state rules and sheriff's office policies, you're not necessarily, you're talking about the number of rounds that has to be completed? Not the number of individuals required by the state to be there?
Right, we have to meet those two rounds per hour. And then if there's special watches, which is fifteen minutes, they have to be met within that time period, or we violate the statute.
So what you're saying is you don't have enough people now per shift to make that many rounds? Is that what you're saying?
Right. With all the other duties.
Commissioner Goins?
I guess my, so you're asking for, you're actually going to ask for nine, nine new positions except the administrative assistants. We're, we're looking for nine more detention officers, is that correct?
Four.
Four now and. Five, five additional in a new budget year.
Well, that's possible. Yeah, we haven't met on that yet, but.
Okay. I guess for me, I'd like to see what that, what that cost is, what that's going to look like cost wise. And maybe if we. carve out a little time at retreat to talk about, talk about the cost and what it's going to cost the taxpayers. For those positions.
Yeah, it does say, you know, we, we read this to say you're asking for four detention officers immediately. And two clerical workers, that's like right now.
Yes.
And then in the next paragraph, it says you do request to, to ask for five additional detention officers in the next twenty-four, twenty-five year, which would be as early as July the first. So I think what Commissioner Goins is saying is. This letter indicates you're about to ask us tonight and in a few weeks for the total of nine detention officers. Is that where we think we're needing to go here?
Yes.
And, and two clerical workers, which would be about eleven new people added to the, to the jail personnel. Yeah. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I'm just, from that point, like, you know, somebody's got to pay for this, obviously, and we know you guys. You know, we're kind of at your mercy. We don't know, I don't know anything about running the jail. Do you guys know anything about running jail?
I just, I won't stay out of it.
That's right. So, you know, if you say you need five or if you need eight or if you need fifteen or if you need twenty-three or if you need twenty-three more next month. I guess we're kind of at your mercy and in a trusting relationship that we have. We're just, you know, I'm just, we're just trying to get to where you think you're going and it looks like you're, you're going to go for nine detention officers and two clerical workers, which is a total of eleven people between now and when we pass the budget for the next fiscal year. So with that, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but just an average figure. I'm going to ask on, I'm going to ask our. Manager and or assistant manager and personnel director Sandra Snow. If you just had to give a round. Figure as to an average salary. If you, if you talked about detention staff and those two clerical workers, about how much apiece would it cost the good citizens of Surrey County to add eleven people to the jail? In one year?
If you could come to the microphone so that.
Yeah, come on up. Focus, focus.
I talked to Chief Love this afternoon and we discussed the numbers and discussed the current budget. Around forty-nine thousand for each detention officer.
So assuming between now and sometime before the next calendar year is over, we're talking about nine times, what'd you say? Forty-nine thousand, let's just round it off. I can't do math that good. That's about. Four fifty, okay?
The grand total for the four positions, the four officers and two clerical is.
I thought it was five officers.
Well, this, this has changed it to four on here. Is it four now or is it five?
Four officers currently, and then we were going to address the other later in the year, so.
Okay. Right at two hundred and eighty thousand for the.
That's for the immediate request of four detention officers and two clerical workers?
Yes.
So immediately that would cost us. For, for this, for this one year salary. Six times fifty thousand? Three hundred thousand dollars a year. Is that about what you would say that would cost the county?
Yes, sir.
And that's not counting the mention of five more that you might want to ask for in the next fiscal year, which could be as early as July the first, which would be five times fifty more, which would be two hundred and fifty thousand. So we're talking about a minimum of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would, it would cost the county each year starting right now and every year thereafter or more as these salaries were probably destined to go up. So that's. That's, I think that's what the board is trying to wrap its head around. Sheriff not, not trying to say you're asking for eleven tonight, but you're asking for or six tonight and you've mentioned you want to ask for five for the next year and we're already in budget year discussions for this next year. So I think we're trying to wrap our head around about how much money that would cost as an annual increase in the jail. And I think we finally come to.
So.
Six hundred thousand plus.
So, okay, so it's six hundred plus?
Yeah, for those total eleven.
Okay, for the.
While we're talking about salaries and how much it's going to cost taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
Do you or? General Administrator Shelton explain the misdemeanor confinement program?
Yes, I, I was going to do that in a few minutes, but I. Chief Oil was going to do that. So we do have some.
All right, he can, he, he can hold a minute. Any more discussion or, or questions? Commissioner Goins?
Mr. Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson?
Lieutenant Shelton. These detention officers now, each shift, you have two officers to go around every hour? Is that what you're saying?
Every dorm has to be checked twice an hour.
Every dorm that has somebody in it has to be checked.
If there's not inmate in it, we have to go around it.
Every dorm in has to be checked, what, two times an hour?
Right, now there's two small dorms where we put special housing in those inmates. Some of them has fifteen minute watches, so that's four rounds an hour.
How many detention officers does it take to go around the whole jail? Can two do it all? Can two people do it all? Tell me how many, how many does it take to do that, just do that one job? That's your top priority, is that correct? Being it's mandated? The other, then you do other things when you can. Is this, is this a top priority going to these? Being it's a mandated thing by the state?
Number one priority.
How many, how many detention officers has to do that every day, every shift?
At least five.
At least five. And how many do you have now?
Four, four, we got a good day. Sometimes five, but four if it's.
Four if nobody's out sick, nobody's in training or on vacation.
Or at the hospital.
What do you do now to make that happen? Just pull somebody from somewhere else? Yes. So if you had one more, you would, every day, if you had five people there, they could do it.
Yes.
Six could do it better.
Absolutely.
And if you got four now, you would have four already sometimes and then five sometimes, so you'd have eight or nine. So if, if six could do it a lot better, then seven could do it a lot better, eight could do it a lot better. I'm saying nine should be able to do it really good. Would these other detention officers you're talking about, Sheriff, be for this also?
Like for the future, the other.
Yes, yes.
Well, there's some other things that we'd like to implement, a lot of other programs such as the trash pickup. Mental health, substance abuse classes, and that takes people. We have to have escorts. We have to have an officer with, with these people. And so that was what I was going to speak to you about, you know, later in the month, about the other five. Wasn't prepared really tonight to do that, but that's what the other five would be to implement a lot of programs that we haven't been able to do it because of space.
Yeah, understand. We certainly, certainly, and I promise you, we weren't trying to put you on the spot here, but you just, in your same presentation, it talked about six now, then it talks about five in the near future and we're already in the near future because we're already talking about the July budget. So I think our minds kind of jumped to there and it's eventually going to be eleven that you're asking for. Commissioner Marion, any other comments?
Yeah, I, when we're talking about costing taxpayer money for all these positions they're asking for. There is a program that he said he was going to discuss and talk about, about the misdemeanor confinement and that would alleviate a lot of the cost to the taxpayer. And that's what I asked for them to do.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, in the same vein that we were on here a minute ago on the positions. The. I, I, I'm assuming that this jail is a lot safer to operate than the old jail. Is that a fair assumption? Safer for your officers?
If fully staffed, yes.
Even not fully staffed, is this jail safer than the old jail?
Than the old, yes, than the old.
Okay, all right. Is it a fair assumption to say that this jail is? Takes with its configuration, which is ultra-modern, the very best that there is available in incarcerating inmates in the state of North Carolina. Is it, does it take less staff? Than an antiquated facility, given the same exact number of inmates? If we had two hundred and fifty inmates at the old jail and we had two hundred and fifty inmates at the new jail. In your opinion, would it take the same amount of staff to, to, to staff one over the other one? Or, or could you staff the new jail with less people than you could the old jail, given the same number of inmates?
If it's apples to apples, maybe. But one thing in the old jail, we never had is classification process was stated as mandated because of overcrowding. That means we got to utilize all the dorms to spread out and do classification, which takes more staff. I mean, if you, if we went in and bunched everybody up and, and not do a classification, I can actually run it with less people. But we're not meeting state and federal laws when we do that.
If you got all the positions. That you are requesting. Would you feel comfortable telling the Surrey County taxpayers that you're running that jail just as efficient and at the best cost? And the safest that you could for the utilization of the taxpayers' dollars that you're requesting? In other words, is this? Do you feel like that you're, the taxpayers are being fairly represented, represented in this request?
Absolutely. Because the request is to meet state standards.
But, but you said there are no state standards.
The two rounds per hour.
Well.
In, in utilizing the safety and security of the building, then it takes this staff, just like the camera systems we have in place now. They, they need to be monitored and that's a safety for inmates and officers.
Okay. The positions, the, the positions that you described upfront. And I forget how staffing, let's see, wait a minute. The two additional positions, what do you call those? Clerical, so those are not sworn people. Those could, those could be anybody, is that correct? Okay, and there's two of them, is that correct? Yeah.
Two in the request, yeah.
And. Are any of the people up at the old jail up front, are any of them coming down to the new jail?
We've never had any.
Well, when I go in the front door there, there's people everywhere, all kinds of clerical people in there. I don't. The sheriff's office.
I, I guess your question is.
Well, it's the same building, the same. No, okay, so in the basement, you don't have anybody there? Okay. So. If someone's coming to visit an inmate. Now they go in the old jail in the bottom and, no, what do they do?
We got a lobby in the new jail.
I'm talking about the old jail.
There's, there's nothing there, no inmates.
So you can't visit a prisoner in, in the, in the old jail?
There is no prisoner.
There's no prisoners there.
I, I understand that, but I'm talking about before they were moved, before they were moved. Were, was someone able to come there and visit a prisoner?
Prior to COVID, yes, yeah. Once COVID hit, we've not visited since COVID.
Okay. All right, but prior to COVID, when the old jail was operating in full of prisoners. Was there clerical people in?
No, sir.
In the bottom?
They would pick up a phone.
They'd pick up a phone. I didn't know if it was a bell or a phone or what it was. I, I knew there was something.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
A person from booking have to come out and handle.
Understand, understand. Yes, sir. Okay, and the, the people in the top part of the sheriff's office now. Are any of them going down to the jail to work? The, that clerical staff that's up there? No?
Those are the ones I'm referring to that used to give out the permits and stuff. Have you utilized those folks at the new jail? Are they still at the old sheriff's office? I mean, at your current sheriff's office? Are there, do you even have clerical there at sheriff's office?
Yes, they're still at the sheriff's.
But you're not able to incorporate any of those into either of these two positions at the jail?
No.
And remind me again, and, and this is kind of an outlier, this question here. Remind me again. I know we have a lot of school resource officers in Surrey County. Remind me again what these people do in the summer? The school resource officers, what do they do in the summer, ten weeks?
Well, various thing, they, they do their in-service training during that time. They take their family vacations during that.
Yeah.
And if, sometimes they, they will be assigned to another division. If, if generally it's not patrol, is it? It's usually, we, we. They, they work at, we assign them to. Camp. Boy Scout camp, yeah. And they. About four, four of them do driver's ed classes for the school system during. Yeah, there, there is very little downtime.
Okay.
I, I will admit, I've had the same concern back when we first took office, but after review.
I, I will admit, I've had the same concern back when we first took office, but after review, very little downtime.
All right.
Most of the SROs don't take any days off during the year, so they are able to take their vacation.
Yeah.
Their, all their training, that they, the, the thirty-six hours that they were there, they'll get that took care of during the summer and which ends up being a real short break.
Well, and I've asked that question in the context of, I want to make sure that our, that our personnel are being utilized properly. And, and I know you folks do a great job and, and that's fine. I just wanted to ask that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
For Commissioner Marion's concern, I have, I want to share one, my, one's experience I've had there at the new detention center.
Okay, go right ahead.
I, uh, after they moved in, I, I went down, of course, naturally unannounced, unannounced. And I walked in, nobody's in the lobby, nobody. Well, I, of course, I go use the restroom, I come back out and a, a citizen comes in, uh, and he, he, he would love to see, uh, one of the, I think it was Lieutenant Jenkins, he was there to see him. I think you have a, you have a telephone. And, uh, and I was there, I know the citizen, so we talked a little bit. I think it took probably close to ten minutes for somebody responded to, up, up to the window. Uh, the citizen was getting a little perturbed, because I think he was expected, but they didn't know he was there. And so I, I won't go to bouts that I feel like, uh, uh, somebody needs to be a little quicker on the draw to receive any citizen coming in, uh, to the, uh, so I, I, I would certainly see a need for some type of, uh, uh, personnel there, or, or at least if they're not there at the window, be a whole lot closer by. Such as that. I do want to share that with you because if I was that citizen, I would probably, uh, you know, got a little itchy too, says, why in the world? Yeah, but I, you know, new jail, but we ain't got nobody to an- answer our needs. So I, I would like to say that. And, uh, I don't know, I know we're going to hear what Deputy, Chief Deputy Lowe has to say.
I'm gonna let him talk and then we'll come back and we'll have some suggestions from the board. Uh, Chief Deputy Lowe, I know you're going to talk about state misdemeanor program as along with some other things.
Just real briefly, just, um, of, of course, this is, uh, this, we used, we've always been involved in the state program. Uh, COVID hit, uh, we had ten beds reserved with the state. Uh, we was not able to utilize any of those beds. Uh, so since, since then, we haven't had any. Did, when we started in December seventeenth, when we moved, uh, we had ten beds reserved with the state. Uh, we have since, as of today, we're, we've asked them to up that to thirty. Uh, just since December seventeenth and, or just in the month of January, we have received thirteen thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars, uh, in that program. Uh, of course, we haven't got paid for January yet. That was just for the, from the seventeenth until the end of the month. Our projection is, uh, starting to actually, uh, it was, it had been yesterday when it.
It was the day.
Yeah, we would, uh, we should be receiving a thousand and forty dollars a day for each inmate that we have up to thirty. Right now, we have twenty-six total that's in the misdemeanor confinement program. If we stay on that path, uh, you're looking at thirty thousand one hundred and sixty dollars a month, which for a year be three hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So, you know, the three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars should be a good average of the revenue that these positions could.
Tell us again, just for general public consumption hearing for my, uh, this board, uh, reminder to this board. Tell us what the state misdemeanor program is in a nutshell. They, uh, it's my understanding, it is not a felony conviction. They are, it's the same all over the state of North Carolina. They are incarcerated because of anything that's, it's got to, it could be in lots of things, but not a felony. And they are the only people that are qualified to serve as inmates on a litter inmate litter program, correct? It can only be state misdemeanors. It cannot be people that's committed felonies. Is that correct?
If we in the program.
If, yes, that is correct. If we're in that litter program, yes.
Okay. And do you plan to, if you, you say you got thirty beds designated for these? So right now, if we, if we implemented the litter program by your inmates, uh, we wouldn't have enough people to probably pick up litter. But you're saying if we put out the information to other counties, hey, we got beds here that we're getting paid for. If you've got misdemeanor confinement inmates, we're accepting them now. Do you feel like you would be getting some from other counties? Uh, or do you feel like you'd have enough locked up and incarcerated from our court system here?
My understanding, they, they're begging for beds right now. So, yeah, we, we would, well, we, we have quickly went from ten, uh, to, from zero to we have twenty-six as of today that, that we're getting the forty dollars a day just for the misdemeanor confinement. Now, if we was able to, we had the staffing, as you know, uh, to do the program, the litter program, then that ups that to sixty dollars a day.
Yeah. And are these twenty-six, are they, were they convicted in Surrey County, Stokes County, seventeen B district? Are they from all over the state?
Both, both.
Uh, what, half and half, maybe?
We probably got five or six that's out of camp.
Five or six is out of camp.
From Ash or Allegheny.
I understand. All right. Anything else to add, Chief Lowe?
No, sir. Just wanted to know the rest.
Sheriff, Honorable Sheriff, anything?
Um, no, I, I just want to make one more comment there, um, to in closing, I just, uh, I just like to say, working as a detention officer is a tough job. Uh, every day working in a setting where two hundred and fifty incarcerated people, offenders are being housed, it can be dangerous. It can be stressful and it can be emotionally exhausting, exhausting. And all probability, there's not many Surrey County employees that want to be working every day behind locked doors. And, uh, and so I just, I just want you to strongly consider my request. And thank you so much for letting me present tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Lowe, and thank you, jail.
Mister.
I'm having, Mr. Chairman.
I have a comment before they take off. Uh, you know, uh, these detention officers have put their life at risk all these several last years that we've been overcrowded in that jail. And we finally got them in the new detention center. They went from a one hundred and ten person facility to a three hundred and sixty person facility. And if you've ever walked through it, it's, it's humongous. It's, it's a monstrosity compared to the old jail. And I don't see you going from a hundred and ten, where you sometime averaged a hundred and seventy. I have heard two hundred, uh, which is, uh, two hundred or more, which is very detrimental to, uh, the inmates and the detention officer's health and livelihood. And, you know, it is safer down there now because they're spread out. But it's a huge facility and they're talking about making rounds and you've got to make eye contact with these inmates twice an hour. Takes a while to do that. So I understand why you need more people. And, uh, and I heard you say that people, the inmates that are doing the laundry don't have anybody watching over them. Ones cooking or serving don't have anybody watching them. That's dangerous. So I just, uh, I don't, I don't, I thought I appreciate the job that y'all do, and I know the citizens of Surrey County appreciate what you do. And, uh, that's, that's all my only concerns is, uh, I think you need what you think you need. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Marion, uh, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what our detention officers do. I, I do have some questions and, uh, I think for me to, to chew on this just a little bit, I think it's something we can make a decision on next week, uh, at retreat if, if, uh, we need them now. Uh, I do have some, I do have some, uh, some things I need to think about and, uh, want to ask some questions about. And, uh, so, um, that's where I'm at tonight.
All right. In the essence of time, uh, Commissioner Harris, you want to jump in again?
Yes, uh, uh, Larry Lowe mentioned, um, that thirty thousand a month on those, uh, misdemeanor confinements, three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars a, a year. Um, from a cost comparative analysis, I, I know that's revenue. I'm assuming that's revenue you're referring to. My question would be, what, what are the actual cost numbers to Surrey County? Which, you know, you could refer to as profit. How, how much are the actual reali- realization of income or revenue for Surrey County? Would it be, uh, because obviously there's a cost factor involved to feeding and housing and taking care of these inmates. And, and I'm assuming your number was a revenue number and you get that to me later, um, Larry, if you'd like, um, no worries. Uh, one question for the sheriff, uh, since he's here. Uh, Sam Page was a, is a big proponent of, um, uh, inmates picking up trash on the highways. Sam Page is probably the biggest proponent of picking up trash by inmates that there is in the state of North Carolina. And I know you're a big Sam Page fan and, uh, did, and I know Sam Page was here in the county a few days ago, because you called me and kindly invited me to that. And, and I'm very sorry I wasn't able to come. I was busy. But did you happen to talk to Sam Page about, uh, inmates picking up litter while he was here?
I did not, necessarily.
Okay, all right.
I have before.
Okay, all right.
I, I, Commissioner, did have talked to Sam Page. I talked to him the other day at the meeting and sometime afterward. He is a big proponent of it. He says it's one of the most wonderful things that Sheriff's Department of Rockingham County has done is start the litter inmate, uh, inmate litter program. And, uh, you know, we talked about it, then COVID came along. And now we've moved into a new jail and now we've got shortages of, uh, personnel and we filled that up. Now we've got some, realized some more issues there where we need some more personnel. I'll just say again, on top of that, uh, we're still very interested in, uh, a litter program conducted by you, the sheriff and the, and the, uh, inmates. And, uh, I think it will be a wonderful thing for the county. Uh, I have, I, I'll tell this again, we've talked, I think there's about, uh, twenty-four counties that's involved in it. According to the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, they say nothing but glowing remarks about it. There's never been incidents where there's been any suits that were successful in any type of liability toward the, uh, sheriff's departments that are conducting this. And certainly we'll have this discussion about what we're going to do with these extra personnel. But, uh, I too want to, uh, uh, agree that we still have that on our minds and we're still looking forward to the day when we can go down the road and it's a Surrey County Sheriff's Department inmate litter program and they're on the sides of the road working. And I'm sure they're just as happy as we are to get out of jail and pick up garbage. So keep that in mind. Commissioner Goins, you're suggesting that we take this, kick this can down the road and take it up at the retreat in two weeks. Uh, taking the consensus, gentlemen, Commissioner Johnson?
Next week.
Next week.
At the retreat?
Yes, that's what he's suggesting.
Call at the retreat. Is that what you're saying?
That's what he's suggesting.
I like, I like that.
Okay, Commissioner Harris?
I'm good with that. Haste makes waste.
Okay, Commissioner Marion? All right, I'm good with that. And so she, we shall take it up next week. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. All right.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate what you do. All right. Seems like we need a break, but I guess we'll pursue on. That's the pleasure of the board here, gentlemen. Okay, next on the agenda, I am going to, uh, call up, uh, Marty Needham, Development Services Director. And, um, Howard Jones, you're here on behalf of the, uh, Planning Director and the Planning Board, and you've been involved in the rezoning, overseeing that from a legal standpoint, uh, that first took up the issue of Red Oak Development. And, um, so I'm gonna let you guys, uh, say what we're here for. I have a, just a very quick, um, opening remark and then I will call the meeting into a public hearing.
Okay. Evening Commissioners. This is case ZCR one, two, three, five. The applicant is Jason Tate, representing Red Oak Development. The proposal is a request for conditional rezoning for two parcels and a portion of a third parcel totaling ten point six six acres. Current zoning on the property is both CB and RA. The proposed zoning is HBC, Highway Business Conditional. The properties are in an open area of low to medium residential density, along with rural business and highway business zone properties within close proximity. Properties have direct road frontage on Old Highway six oh one. The staff communicated via phone and in person with the applicant in October and November of twenty twenty-three. Highway Business Conditional was requested by the applicant. The properties are not zoned to accommodate the carport business and several structures do not meet current building setback requirements. At December's planning board meeting, the community came out and voiced their concerns about the property and existing traffic conditions. The applicant has submitted a site plan that asks for rezoning of the entirety of all three parcels to HBC. After much discussion, it was suggested that the applicant and community meet to try and come up with a mutually beneficial solution. The applicant asked to table the planning board's decision until such meeting could be had and a revised site plan could be produced. The applicant and community members met on February sixth, I am told, but no clear resolution was attained. So the matter came back before the planning board on February twelfth. After a lengthy hearing, the planning board voted and made a recommendation to deny the partition for rezoning, finding that the request is inconsistent with the Surrey County Land Use Plan twenty forty and is not reasonable and is not in the public's interest. The request is not consistent with zoning and use of the surrounding area. It is not compatible with the rural nature and agriculture and residential use of the area. And the requested uses would not be compatible with the surrounding community. There was also a variance hearing on the setback requirements that was withdrawn due to the planning board's decision to deny the requests. Staff will present facts and answer any questions, the more we have. But first, the petitioner has submitted right before the hearing a new site plan. I will turn this portion over to Development Services Attorney, Mr. Jones, and County Attorney, Mr. Walts, to the impact of that site plan legally.
All right, Mr. Jones, please.
Please, the board, um, just stepping back a moment, uh, the conditional rezoning, uh, just to set the stage, is based upon a site plan. So in our normal rezoning, we have a list of uses and we don't, we're not even allowed to consider what the applicant says they're going to use the property for. This is wholly different, a, a hundred percent different. Uh, everything here is contingent upon that site plan, which sets out the uses that are allowed and sets out the buildings, uh, the access, the buffers, setbacks, set, sets out everything. And that controls moving forward if it is approved. Um, as Director Needham said, there, we had our planning board meeting originally in November, uh, that was tabled. Uh, issues were raised by the community and there was a question whether or not some of those issues could get resolved if the parties met. Parties did meet, there was a reviewed site plan submitted. That second site plan is what's in your package. That site plan is what the planning board met this February, uh, and reviewed and after a lengthy hearing, determined that they rec, they recommended to this body that the petition to rezone be denied. And they filled out their lengthy questions that we mandate that they answer. Uh, there's a four or five page document in your, in your, uh, agenda package. It says that each of the questions they were required to answer by our ordinance and by one sixty D. And then they also made their findings that it was not consistent with the Surrey County Land Use Plan twenty forty and that it was not reasonable and was not in the public interest. Now, that finding is not binding on this board. The board has to look at it and consider it, but it doesn't have to follow it. Um, in addition to that, there was a, also a request for a variance. Uh, there are a number of buildings on this property that do not meet setbacks and will not be able to meet HB setbacks. If this, if, if the board reached a consensus tonight to approve this rezoning, okay, then the setbacks and the buildings and the layout with regard to property lines do not meet current Surrey County ordinances. The variance was withdrawn. Where does that leave us? If the board reaches a consensus and would want to approve this, then under section one. then under Section 154.006-16A3 of our development ordinance, this board may approve the site plan with setbacks that are not consistent with the general ordinances for, with our ordinances for HB. But you must expressly say that you are doing so with the direction that those normal standards won't apply to this property and that the buildings as set forth on this site plans with the normally deficient setbacks will be okay. You're allowed to do that, okay? Which is similar to a variance, but it's a legislative decision by this body. But if you do it, the law requires that you say in public, in front of Andrew, that yes, and direct Andrew to put in the minutes that we're not going to hold the applicant to those standards. The standards that are set forth here, those, some of the setbacks are off by however many feet. You would need to say we're granting the rezoning and we're also saying that those setbacks requirements that don't meet the normal HB will control. Does that make sense? That's an extra step you would have to take. And of course, then there would be no application for a variance. The problem with moving forward the variance, if this board, if this board reaches a consensus to approve this site plan, but doesn't address the setbacks, you've amended the map, but you haven't dealt with the setbacks. So you have to do that tonight if you'd reach a consensus to go that way and approve, and approve the rezoning request. Now, if you get to that point, I would suggest that you ask Marty to just summarize for you those, those areas that would need to be dealt with, you know, which pieces of which buildings the setbacks would be relaxed. Now, of course, you would also need to make a consistency and reasonableness finding and a finding that it's in the public interest of the citizens of Surrey County. And that's a written finding. You've done that before. There's a sample in your packet and it is set out. It is or is not, and you'll circle one, and then you'll make whatever findings. And as we've talked about before, you can do that all in one whack. Commissioner Marion is the one that pointed that out when we originally dealt with this, much to my chagrin. And he was right. So we have a combined finding here for consistency with the land use plan 2040 and also reasonableness and in the public interest. But you have to do that and you have to say why. It doesn't have to be elaborate, it can be one sentence. So that is another matter that will have to be dealt with. Now, there's another wrinkle here tonight. And again, I'm not concerned with the decision. That is your decision, whether or not to, whether or not to approve or disapprove this. I'm concerned with process. That's all I'm concerned with, in that we follow the ordinance and 160D that the legislature set out. As I said, there was an original site plan that was reviewed by the planning board back in November. There was discussion, it would be good for us to, not us, but the, the neighbors and community members and the applicant to sit down and talk and think about revising it. That was done. That was site plan number two. This evening, I received site plan number three, okay? Which is right here. Now, this site plan, I'm not versed at reading site plans and I'm not the planning board. So I can't offer any opinion as to whether or not, what it does or doesn't do. But the applicant will explain that the applicant thinks it addresses a core issue with this, which is adding another access. I don't know if, if, if that is what the planning board would find or if that would be Director Needham's opinion. However, here's the problem. Tonight's meeting has been publicly noticed and advertised with regard to the second site plan. We reran our notices for that second hearing. In addition, the planning board hasn't had an opportunity to look at this site plan number three. And we have a planning board for a reason. This is what they do. And required to have that review under 160D and our ordinance. So Ed and I have both reviewed the ordinances independently and then we met together. And our opinion that we had conveyed to the county manager and Director Needham is that, number one, under 154.009F, an applicant can withdraw their petition at any time until a vote is taken. That's what our ordinance says. It says at any time, you can withdraw your application. Well, that doesn't solve the problem, does it? A resubmittal would solve the problem. Another petition. Well, there's a wrinkle with that.
Another petition with the current plat attached.
With the new plat.
Right.
With, with plat number three. In order to get it back before the planning board, if, if, if the board wants to go down the road of considering this plat number three, it needs to go to the planning board first. And Ed and I agree that the way that that need, would need to be done would be a withdrawal and a resubmittal. The problem with that is, although any, you can always withdraw your, your application, that is for site plan number two. You can't resubmit or you, you can't have more than one zoning petition in a 12-month period for a piece of property. You just can't do it. And that's under Section E. Unless there's an exception. I know it's complicated, but this is the last wrinkle. Unless this board votes by an 80% of its actual composition. You're composed of five, five, five members. You have to have four fifths vote to allow an exception. That is a shorter period of time for the applicant to, to resubmit than one year. And you have to find it's a hardship or that there's an emergency. Either there's a hardship or an emergency. So I'm sorry for that long discussion, but we have a third site plan here. No one else in the room has seen this site plan. The citizens.
It's not part of the public notice.
Right, it's not part of the public notice. And it may be great, it may not. I don't know, I'm not the planning board. And in order to get it in front of the planning board, we'd have to start over. And the way you start over is to withdraw and resubmit. But you gotta wait a year unless this board by that vote says, says that the applicant can do it in a month or two months or with, you know, immediately. So that is something that, that is in the discretion of the board. And normally that would be handled by the applicant making a written request to the board, as with any other matter, and it going on the agenda.
At a later meeting.
At a later meeting. So if this board, if this, I mean, if, if we want to go down that road, that brings up an issue of timing. Because the last thing the board will need to consider tonight, unless the board approves, unless the board approves the plat, excuse me, the site plan that's in front of it tonight, the second one. Okay, that was in your package. Unless you approve that tonight, if you either, if you either vote or reach a consensus to deny this petition or if the petitioner withdraws the petition, you're going to have to confront one more issue. And that is timing. There is currently, there are currently people using that property. So this has been a large topic of interest for the community. And the, in the interest, number one, in the interest of transparency for the members of the community to know what happens going forward. If there is a, if there is a denial of the, of the petition, then what happens tomorrow morning with regard to that use that's out there? How soon is the use, does the use have to leave? In other words, if it, if it is withdrawn, what happens? So I think the board needs to be transparent and actually confront that. If it is, reaches a consensus to deny it or if the petitioner withdraws the current plat and wants to go back, what happens during that interim? The other.
It's likely to be the same outcome.
Yes. And that's necessary not just for transparency, but it's necessary for the property owner and for the current tenant, Five Star, to know what will happen tomorrow morning. So I think the board needs to at least express a direction to the county officers, what are you doing the day after? And that everyone needs to know when they leave here tonight, what's going to happen tomorrow morning. That's all I wanted to say. And that is, we're here tonight about the site plan that's in your pa, in your packet. If we're not going to discuss that and if this is withdrawn, then, then there is no reason to have any public testimony because it's gone. Because there is no longer a petition. But any discussion tonight and any consideration by this board as to whether or not to grant it is gonna have to be limited to what everyone in the community has already seen, which is the second site plan, the one that's in your packet.
And what was publicly advertised.
Exactly. Now, Ed would like to talk, Ed, Ed, I'd like to turn this over to Ed with regard to the discussion of timing so he can flush that out a little bit, if it would please the board.
My, my opinion is that, and I haven't seen the site plan that was submitted tonight. It may be great. But I hadn't seen it, planning board hadn't seen it. And my opinion is that you, as the Board of Commissioners, would like a recommendation from the planning board on what direction to take. And so that leaves us with either we vote on what's in the package, up or down. Mr. Tate withdraws the application. But in any event, for the new site plan to be under consideration, I, I, I think it just has to go back before the planning board.
All right. Anything else, Ed?
Uh, not yet.
I think I, I think I need a headache powder.
Don't understand all I know about.
It looks like to me, I may be wrong here, so Howard, help me out. You're here, Ed, help me out. The petition we have tonight in our packet that's been publicly noted is for this board's charge to be to vote the rezoning request and grant it or to deny it.
Correct.
All these other things about somebody may withdraw, somebody may come up with a new plan that you, at your, both suggestions, need to go back to the planning board.
Don't they have to, we withdraw it before we vote?
No, we, we can vote on this before us tonight or we can, or there have to be some kind of withdrawal. You seem to be suggesting there might be. I, I don't know how it's appropriate to determine that.
That's correct. Mr. Tate could withdraw the application anytime before you vote. But if you, once you vote, it, it's either up or down and that's it. The other issue, i- if it's withdrawn or denied, then upon application from Mr. Tate, the board would need to address whether they're going to waive the exception of one application per year. And, you know, under, depending on how things work, if, if this thing wound itself back to the planning board and the planning board recommended that the Board of Commissioners consider the exception because the plan is so good or whatever, that'll be another decision for another day. But the, the application for the exception, I think, needs to be in writing. And it needs to have a planning board backing. I mean, just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a comment.
Sure, please.
So, Mr. Walts, all of that is assuming that that we as a board are going or potentially would look favorably at a rezoning request under a new site plan. I mean.
Well, I, I, that, that's correct, Mr. Harris.
If there's three votes on this board against rezoning, it would almost be a mute point to even send it back to the planning board because all of that would be irrelevant. Is, is that?
Well, well, i- i- if the rezoning is denied or if the application is withdrawn, then the way I see it, there is a possibility of a re-application based on the new plat that, you know, I would recommend that the planning board weigh in on whether they are in favor of it or not. But it's ultimately up to you whether the Board of Commissioners grants an exception to the one application per year rule that's set out in the ordinance.
I thought we determined, Ed, I'm sorry, that we would not have to, we would not be compelled to go down that road tonight without.
No, no, you don't need to go down that road.
And that coming before another meeting at a later date.
That's, that's exactly right.
Sooner, but it doesn't, that's, I'm not prepared to deal with that tonight.
No, and, and, and I, and I wouldn't recommend it. But, but that's, in, in the, the greater scheme of things, that's the way it works. It may be several, several meetings down the road. And, and you gotta factor in, the planning board only meets once a month. Y'all meet twice a month. So, so it's, you know, it's, it, it's not going to be a quick decision, in my opinion. And, and another factor, regardless of whether y'all vote tonight on this and there's a public hearing or whether the application is withdrawn, you know, what does Five Star do? In the interim, yeah. It's like, I mean, I guess, you, you could tell them to, i- i- if it's denied or the application is withdrawn, you could tell them to move out tomorrow, but that's just not reasonable or practical. So I think that part of your decision-making process needs to be, what is a reasonable time for operations to cease? Because operations are currently illegal. And of course, if, if the request is approved, that's, that's a moot point. But if it's not approved or the application's withdrawn, you know, what's fair to, to allow them to remove their stuff?
Yes. Well.
And if I could.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Please.
The whole point is, we have a third, we have a third site plan here. And Ed and I are both of the opinion that it can't be considered by this board at this hearing. And there are procedures to get it before the board, but not during this hearing. So that's our only point of all that. It's, it's noticed to everyone here, including the petitioner. You can withdraw your application and resubmit. your application and resubmit, and you can apply for a shorter time period. But unless that happens, this third petition won't be ever considered by this board.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the attorney a question?
Yes, go right ahead.
So am I getting this correct here? To consider that, the chairman is going to have to, without taking a formal vote, he's going to have to take an informal consensus of this board to find out which way we're leaning on the current reason, no? Okay.
The applicant controls, the applicant has a right, an unqualified right to withdraw the application. If the, if the applicant withdraws the application, and if at some future time, this board votes to, to grant the applicant an exception to reduce the one-year period, and then the applicant files a new petition for rezoning, attaching that new site plan, then it can come before the board.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like for us to proceed with what has been planned for tonight. And unless the applicant comes up and takes away his, uh, ru- uh, he wants to, uh, withdraw. And that, uh, we won't do anything if he withdraws, but there's word if in there that they have to consider. Are we willing to address it later on and look at all of this and all that? But as tonight goes, everybody's had ample opportunity to, to address, uh, what's, what's, what we're here for. And, and I, I would love for us to go ahead and not delay uh, our decision tonight unless the applicant withdraws.
Okay.
And then, then we'll go with the ifs and the later, looking at this or that or not, or whatever. That's, I guess you call that a, a game of chance.
I'm, I'm inclined to.
I'm, I'd like to go ahead and proceed with what's been planned. We have a lot of citizens and landowners and others here tonight for us to make a call, if we make the call tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any, anybody else here? Mr. Jones, how do we proceed from here?
See to, uh, allow the applicant to open start this and present his.
You got to open the hearing.
Yeah, got to open a public hearing.
And then?
Okay, at any time, okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. The planning board has previously made a decision of finding on a rezoning request involving Red Oak Development from a zoning of community business and rural development to highway business conditional. This board needs to consider this rezoning request tonight, and we need to hear all parties get involved. And at this time, I'm going to call for a public hearing and invite anybody from the audience to come down and say their piece. Community members, members involved on both sides or any sides. If you will, let's be kind and gentle as we can, and let's, uh, try to limit our comments to four or five minutes if we can. We all need to get out of here and go home. Yes, sir.
Anyone wanting information about this hearing when tonight is over? If you come up, will you put your name, email address, and phone number on this clipboard here? Just, that's all I want to say.
Are you referring to, uh, in regards to where this issue goes in the future? If you want to be involved and given updates on where the process is, if there's been a new site planned, if there's been one that's turned over to the, to the, uh, or if they, or if they want to petition this board to get permission to turn it over to the planning board in the future or the near future, or if they want to wait?
We've had a lot of requests, we've had a lot of requests for information.
All right.
And it's been hard to get it to those people because we don't have all their email addresses.
Well, transparency, anybody who wants to continue to follow this, he's saying we have a sign-up sheet here tonight, and you can put down your name and your, uh, email address, or just simply your email address, and we will, we'll keep you updated.
And the county, the county website also is a good resource, and Suri on the go, for updates on the, the topic.
Yeah, go to the county website for public information. Watch for your local newspapers, I'm sure, to be there, and the public statements. And you have an email opportunity to sign up for updates. Mr. Jones, you, you want to jump in?
Just, all right, just as a point of clarification, are we going to allow the applicant to present his case before the board versus his petitioner? Or are we going to allow public comment?
I guess we should allow the, thank you, Mr. Jones, the petitioner that's given the application to come first.
Yes.
I agree.
If you could come up, please, and, and this is the legislative hearing, and, and Corey George is allowed to speak with and on behalf of, as the engineer and the architect and the, uh, surveyor.
Mr. George, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Uh, I just had a quick procedural question, uh, if, if, and this may be a question for Mr. Jones or, or Mr. Walts. Is it, is it possible in a, in a scenario that the, this board could send this revised site plan back to the planning board for review, alleviating the need for withdrawal and resubmital, which would then not trigger the 12-month requirement?
Ed and I have looked at that, and the problem is that this site plan, and I haven't studied it, has a whole new, a whole new entrance on it. And if it is substantially different or substantial change, then it has to be re-advertized and go through the whole process again.
Understand. It, uh, technically, it's not a second entrance, but it is a second connection point to, um, recirculate traffic, and that is basically based on some additional conversations that we've had on the community, and so we felt like it was in the best interest of the community to revise the site plan, and I understand that if that needs to be reheard before the planning board, I'm just asking procedural questions, if it was, uh, available from this board to send it back.
Yeah, our opinion is that it needs to be, it needs to start out, it needs to start out as a petition, as a new petition before the planning board because it is different than what's been advertised. Correct, Ed?
Yes, it's different than what's been advertised and what's been on file in the planning office that I don't know if any citizens went and looked at it, but that's sort of the general rule that, that they have that opportunity. And it's sort of, it'd be sort of like, and I'm, I'm, I don't mean to be offensive, but it's like a bait and switch. You, you need to, uh, advertise what is going to be considered. And so far, this new plat, it may be the best thing on earth, but, um, nobody's seen it.
Understand, and that's why I'm asking the procedural question.
Yeah.
I- is if we send it back to planning board, then it gets re-advertized, but we don't have to go through any withdrawal or re-application.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, it's an interesting question, uh, unfor- and, and I understand where you're coming from. Unfortunately, the, the the process that's mandated by 160D and also by the ordinance is that a petition comes in, it goes to the planning board, they review it, and they make a recommendation up or down or up with modifications. They've done that, and they've done their duty. I'm not seeing anythi- I, we've, we've looked at this. If we were still in front of the planning board, they could take a timeout and schedule another meeting before they go through that process. We're not locating any authority for allowing this to go back to the planning board uh, and come back and come back before this body. Correct, Ed?
It's my understanding, if, if, if they don't withdraw, we either vote yes or no.
Yep, yep.
And it's done.
That's it, that's it.
Understand. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and for essence of time, we're going to move forward, but if people are looking for a restroom, you go right back out the hall, and it's right to your left as you go out of the building. I see some people coming in and going, somebody has told me people are looking for the bathroom. It's right outside the door, just turn left. It sounds like we're going round and round, Mr. Jones, back and forth, back and forth.
But it is what it is. We either talk about, we either vote on this tonight, or it's withdrawn.
Yeah, and I'm, I, I, no, no criticizing, no, no criticism intended. I'm just saying, we have, we have done that a few times, and I feel like now we either need to move forward and, uh, open the public hearing and, you know, let the applicant say or do whatever they want to do and proceed from there. I agree. All right, it is now time for the public hearing concerning the Red Oak Development and its rezoning requests to be heard, and I will invite the petitioner for Red Oak to come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Tate with, uh, Red Oak Development. So we, um, have obviously been back and forth many times with this, this project is a very unique situation. Um, we have some data showing, uh, sort of why we're to this point, uh, with having to make these decisions. I want to eritrate on the revised drawing. The way that came about, we had no intentions of actually revising that drawing. There was a concern, um, citizen against this project that actually made a phone call uh, Thursday afternoon, uh, to Mr. Rowe, that's part of Red Oak Development, and had the recommendation uh, with what the planning board had said, um, about emergency egress, uh, trucks unloading, flow of traffic, things like that, that, uh, if the possibility was to get this dual lane to an adjacent property we have there was possible, um, that he possibly could get the community to back off. Uh, we thought that was great news. That's what we've asked from day one, was to, to try to, the community to tell us what the concerns are, so we could attack the concerns. This is not a matter of rezoning for any profit for us, any profit for the, uh, the, the company Five Star operating. It's what's best for everyone involved. Uh, we're not there just for us or the community or them. You know, we want the best for everyone involved. And that was the purpose for our February the 6th meeting. Um, unfortunately, uh, that's the first one we'd ever done. Uh, we didn't know what to expect. Uh, we were told that there could be 15 to 16 people show up. Uh, we made accommodations for those, and we had four to five. Now, some was sickness, some was working, uh, children-related issues, we understand. Uh, during that meeting, there was two folks there that we feel like, um, are very against this project and, and the rezoning. And, uh, one made a comment that he would like some additional shrubbery in areas of existing business next door. No problem. You know, we said, hey, we can accommodate that. Uh, we did make it very verbal to the community that if you just don't want this business here, we can't help that. We're not the board that can, can make that decision. But if you want to change to any drawing or any comment, we're, we're, we're here to help, right? We're not here to, to do anything invasive to anyone involved. Um, at that time, the other member uh, actually stood up and, and told us the reason he was upset was, was he was in line to purchase this property, which we had no idea. Um, and even went as far as making the comment that if he had have purchased it, there would be a carport company there because he wanted to lease it to a carport company. And the only difference in him and us is he would not have renovated the property and made any positive changes, which was very shocking to hear that from a member that was completely against the project. Um, you know, I hate to bring that up here, but that's facts that I think people need to hear. Um, so there's been a lot of comments back and forth. Um, I, until, uh, December, I'd never been to a planning board meeting or a commissioners meeting in my life. I didn't even know where to come to. Um, very nervous talking in front of people and, uh, getting better at it because I've got a lot of practice lately. But, um, you know, there's a lot of things here I would like to share. Uh, one, if I may, just kind of share it around, this was in existence. There, I want to say in 2007 or eight, maybe even nine. Um, so I took some time and I, and, and it was a, a woodworking architectural, uh, or architectural woodworking. And so I wanted to define what that meant. I had no idea what that was. And that's actually considered manufacturing. Uh, they manufacture, uh, could manufacture staircases, uh, custom trim and things that they bring. The definition was they bring raw materials in, and they manufacture them into a good that the general public would want to purchase. Uh, so I just thought that was very interesting that this property has been that at some point in its life, uh, under manufacturing. Another point I would like to point out is there's been some discussion of, uh, and comments from the public that we are actually destroying rural agriculture farmland. Uh, it needs to remain farmland. Uh, it needs to remain what people remembers when they were children and, and in this community, that this business needs to go somewhere else. Um, so we, we, we took those opinions from the public, and, and we didn't have a solution for those. But I would like to pass over these two highlighted drawings that actually shows that we were only, one drawing actually shows what is RA, and the other orange actually shows what is currently CB. Um, there's a whole list of, of items you guys may be familiar with that you can actually operate in the CB classification. Um, many of those businesses are very much more invasive to this area than what we feel like we are proposing that's already currently there. Um, but I wanted to point out, we're only actually taking about five and a half acres that's in RA now and changing it to the HB. So we're not changing the whole entire property. Uh, there, there's a lot of rural land behind it that just does not have, um, the means of building or constructing. So that's why that was never put into any of the zoning request. Um, there was comments that, you know, they would just keep building and building and building, uh, and expanding. There was another comment made that I need to clarify that said that during the application process, Five Star Metal Buildings has grown 35%. And, and what that means is, is Five Star Metal Buildings has grown 35% in their sales volume. And, and the reason being, this facility allows them the ability to build an 80-foot wide clear-span truss. They've never had that ability. Uh, that did not mean they needed more employees. That did not mean that they needed anything else other than additional metal and the ability to have a building that they could construct that, uh, which those buildings sell for many times what a smaller building sells for. So now they were able to go after that market that they had never had an opportunity to do. So that's where the 35% comes in. Another point that I would like to make, which was, which was sort of concerning is, is we have this on a conditional request, and this is a list of what we're not asked to be able to use HB for. HB clearly could be used for. Um, we, we, we do not want those items that's on that list that says, that we will not put in that, that zoning. Um, we would want those businesses within the community. So it's a conditional request, alleviating those items that's on the list there. Let's see, there was another item that, um, that we feel like we need to mention, uh, that there's a, there's another possible community member that, that may voice their concerns against this. Um, we took their comments into consideration. Um, the last thing I want to do is, is go to bed at night thinking that I've put something in a community um, that I wouldn't want in my own community, or that was endangering my children, or my parents, or my grandparents, and so forth. So that, that person, you know, voiced against the project, uh, very heavily. And come to find out, they, they operate a company that's very close to this property that is completely operated in a rural agriculture zone that is just as invasive to the community as, as what the carport company is. So it, it really made me scratch my head with, you know, why would someone be so against this project when it's already zoned CB? We're changing from CB to HB when you're operating a, a numerous acres and, and a company within an RA zoning. Like, I, I, I don't understand that. Um, so I just wanted to point that out to the, to the Commissioners as well. Um, ultimately, we, we would, we would love the Commissioners to allow us to go before the planning board, and, and the only reason that we say that is we would have never made these changes without the community member calling and saying, hey, what about this? This is a great idea. You know, this may work. And we're like, we're finally getting somewhere, right? I mean, we, we want to do what's right. We want to do what you guys want to see done in your community. And we had no idea how to do that properly with the law. And, and obviously, it's very detailed and complex and seems almost somewhat impossible without, uh, the Commissioners' approval for us to do that. So uh, with all that being said, um, we, we did have the meeting. Uh, we did go before the planning board. Uh, the planning board rejected us, and we feel like from the explanation of, they did not feel like that there was adequate, uh, emergency lane travels. Uh, there could be a presentation that's presented tonight that does not really do complete justice of the area that's there to work with. Uh, the photos were taken, uh, by, by drone footage with, without our consent, uh, which is okay. We, we're, we're not upset about that. Um, but it, it does not show the path of what the path is there today. Um, that was during time where materials were being shifted and so forth. Um, the items that we're very concerned about that the community will voice as well as the traffic. The Five Star Metal Buildings only gets, and I spent some time with them after that meeting to find out exactly day-to-day, five days a week, what goes on at your business. They have seven semi-loads of materials max per week. Um, the issue being is those deliveries may be scheduled on Tuesday, but they don't show up till Wednesday. So therefore, you, you have two trucks stacked up instead of having one per day and so forth. That's out of their control. Um, but also, it's, it's not fair to the community for those trucks to be parked on the side of the road either. Um, this plan, the, the plan that you guys have in the packet shows the parking area out back, shows an unloading area. Uh, just did not show the two additional lanes of egress to get out of that area, which was a concern to the planning board. Uh, we really feel like that, um, we had have had that conversation during the community meeting, we could have put that on there. Uh, we didn't realize that would, that would change the public's view of that, of that, uh, rear property. So they have, uh, 28 install crews. When we're talking an install crew, the, the, the crew doesn't meet there, they don't park their car there, they have the, the duly pickup truck. They have the, the duly pickup truck, which you may hear tonight that their heavy load are destroying the road. You know, we, we showed evidence to the planning board that these trucks are, are within half of what DOT says can operate on them. So long story short with that, these crews come in, they get their load, they're there for four to six hours and they leave and go to a project. They are gone between three and four days on average. So at any given day, we have no more than six to seven trucks loading on an average. Again, they could get delayed, they could show up early. There's times we need the overflow parking in the rear in order to alleviate the crews parking on the side of the road and, and clogging up the fiery grass lane that we call it. Other items that we had talked about with the community was obviously the shrubbery. Mr. Haymore has a very beautiful farm next door. Some trash and things can, can easily blow over there. The drawing you have in your packet and, and this highlighted draw and actually shows that much more legible versus trying to look for a buffer in that packet. The green areas show where we plan on doing shrubbery. We doing fencing to eliminate those issues from interfering with Mr. Haymore's farmland. The businesses that we figured have operated there within the thirty years. Sherman Simpson had a construction company there from the late sixties to the mid seventies. Smith Road Bridge Company actually manufactured bridge trusses there. They actually went out and installed the trusses from there. They welded H piles and different things on that property. The furniture, what I call furniture manufacturer, if you will, which was the packet I gave you, was also there. And then a company called Blue Ridge Truck and Trailer used it for engine storage and truck rear ends and chassis and things like that. So one other piece I want to share, Mr. Haymore had, had made a comment that, you know, it was, it was very hard for him to have his morning breakfast and, and look at, you know, the mess that's over there, referring to the carport company, which was, which was very shocking to us and it, and it really hit home. You know, these folks have one of the nicest facilities that I've seen within the county. And I think there's over one hundred carport, maybe not manufacturers, but carport dealers and installers and manufacturers within the county. So this first photo is going to be, how many trucks was there? When we bought the property, we moved, or we had moved one hundred and eleven trucks from the property that were visual from Mr. Haymore's farm, which was, was. We also have understood that the gentleman that operates the business next door, that's, that's the nature of his business. We understand that. We're, we're not saying that it should or shouldn't be there. We just felt like that we made a huge improvement to that property that we're asking for rezoning during that time. So. That's pretty much all I have for now.
All right. Anyone else on behalf of the petitioner? Making the case for rezoning? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question for you. And maybe this is a silly question, but this col- colossal group of coke trucks next door, that, that don't have anything to do with you or any of this, does it?
So that's a, that's a very touchy subject within us as the, the, the land.
Within who?
With us as the landowner. So we, we bought this property from the gentleman that actually operates that business. With the understanding that he was going to purchase another property somewhere else and, and move his business there. We were told twelve months and I think he had issues with another property, which is very hard to find a proper property to do the business he does. We all understand that. So he is still currently there. There has been talks about he possibly may be moving to a different location. And that brings me to a good point at during the community meeting. One community member said, hey, if they were up there as well, I would have no issue with this. Well, that would solely be our ten if it was zoned properly. But if he leaves tomorrow, we're not zoned properly for them to go next door, which would.
So you owned the property where the coke trucks are, is that correct?
Yes, sir. There's thirty, like roughly thirty-two acres there total in three different parcels, two are zoned CB or sorry, four, four different parcels, two are zoned CB, two are zoned RA.
And. Okay. And. And so he has your permission to have all that there, is that what I'm?
Well, he doesn't necessarily have our permission. He was there when we bought the property, so we.
Still your responsibility, the coke trucks.
I, I, I guess it could be. And I think the zoning is correct in CB that he can have those there from what I understand.
And, and I, I, okay, I have a question for you. And, and I know this is not pertaining to the rezoning, this is kind of a, a ancillary question. Can I ask a counselor?
I'll say yeah.
Okay. So have you engaged legal counsel in regards to this?
I have not. And the reason we haven't is because we, we kept hearing that, you know, he had found a different location.
Okay, I would have to, after, after an extended period of time, if you have not engaged legal counsel in regards to property that you own, where this is taking place, I would have to assume that there's tacit permission on your behalf that it's okay to do this.
I think it would be on the, the, the planning board's behalf. I think they've been out and determined that he was, he was properly zoned for what he's doing in that particular property. I could be wrong.
I think where Mr. Harris is going is if you don't want him there, it's your responsibility to try to get him gone. I mean.
Are you going to try to get him gone or not?
Well, you know, that, that's, that's not something that we feel like is morally right to do, right? When we bought the property, we, we gave him a handshake agreement that until he found his property he was moving to, that he stated hopefully within a year, which was the key word, hopefully, that we would allow him to stay there. Now, if there was a zoning issue that he was violating the zoning and he was received a letter and we received a letter as property owner, we would have no choice.
How long ago did you buy his property, sir?
Two thousand twenty-one, the end of twenty.
Okay, so it's been over a year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's all I have, Mr. Count, uh, Mr.
And we have made contact with him. We have not got the final answer to his decision on.
Yeah, I wouldn't, your business to run however you see fit. I was just trying to say if you were saying you wish you weren't there or you were glad he's there whether it's your responsibility that that works out.
We're, we're not necessarily comparing businesses over there. Obviously that we feel the carport industry would be less invasive for the public eye, the public, you know, safety of, of, of those trucks and so forth.
But you had not given him an eviction notice or anything?
No, no, sir. We, we did make phone contact last week. Mr. Rowe had some medical issues going on and was not able to reach out to him on Friday. We hope to have a conclusion with him this week.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else on behalf of the petitioner to request rezoning? For the Red Oak Development rezoning request? Okay. No one else? Yes, sir. No. No one else? I will ask for other public input from other interested parties who come down to the microphone and comment your wishes or your request or your feelings, if you will. This is a little different than open forum. We're all wanting to get in bed sometime tonight. So for the essence of time, we'd like to suggest maybe keeping it five minutes or under. But you know, we don't, we, we can't hold you to that. We're not going to come down there and drag you off if you go a little over. But if you will be as brief as you can and precise as you need to be, tell us who you are and what your comments are. Phone number, who you are, what your name is, what your phone number is.
Certainly, excuse me. My name's Bill Haymore. My telephone number's three, three, six, four, oh, eight, oh, seven, three, one. I'm an adjacent property owner and, and I've prepared some visual aids if they're available that we could pull those up. I've said them earlier this week. Thank you. This is the, um, a map, just a property map of the area that we're looking at rezoned. Highlighted yellow is the property we're speaking of, of, and the community therefore around it. Everything on highway, Old City Highway six oh one, to my knowledge and what I've been able to research, there's nothing else on highway business. And I offer a listing of a hundred and ninety properties in Surrey County that are highway business, none of which are on this road. So if you, if you'd like to see that, that's, I'm sorry, I didn't make copies for anyone else. Okay, cause it's conditional zoning requests. For the sake of time, we all understand that we've asked to rezone the property in the highway business. The rezoning request facts, these are, these are just facts for the, the board. Again, no other properties are on highway business on Old Highway six oh one. The current business is occupied and operated a business not permitted by current zoning for over a year. The business cannot be legally operated without rezoning. Five new buildings were constructed without zoning compliance, environmental health inspection permitting, building permits, ADA compliance inspection. Surrey County Planning and Zoning Board unanimously rejected the request to support rezoning. The location failed to meet the requirements of the Surrey County Land Use Plan and requested zoning is not a fit for the site. This is the illustration of the number of buildings that have been built since the current tenant is operating there. None of which have been permitted. Neighborhood conformity. The surrounding parcels are zoned residential agriculture. Spot zoning of this property contrasts with the zoning regulations that apply to surrounding parcels. Again, no other properties are zoned highway business on Old Highway six oh one. The zoning will result in a reduction of property values in the area. That's an opinion. I'm not an expert on that. The compatibility of requested zoning is not consistent with a comprehensive zoning plan and is recommended by the Surrey County Zoning and Planning Board. This, you can make your own opinion how this affects local property values. I don't think there's anything else has to be said about the appearance of the property. Community impact from the traffic, increased road traffic of semi trucks, hauling raw materials, transporting the finished goods and waste. That, that happens on a daily basis. The lack of a DOT study performed to determine the impact of the roads of the local traffic. There's increased danger from trucks entering the highway and are stopped in the highway. DOT is currently addressing safety concerns from operating in a right of way. As Mr. Tate had mentioned, the business has grown, whether it's revenue or it has grown. So growth of the business, so highway business will continue to compound safety issues. The more it grows, the more traffic is involved with growth. Here's a copy of the notice from DOT dated December the fifth. This condition has not been addressed for DOT as of today. When I followed up on it. This is an illustration of what DOT is addressing. The area directly adjacent to the road is paved and, and marked for employee parking. So just a lot of traffic that has to enter in one concentrated area. This is the site plan that, that the community has so, and, and I, I do agree with what Mr. Tate said. If there was something to, that something would help traffic, anything is an improvement. But in a site plan, there's a single road that comes into this property. All the manufacturing activity that takes place is on each side of the road. If you load a truck, if you unload a truck, if you stage a truck, it has to stop in the middle of the road. You cannot get a semi truck in there. There is no way to turn a semi truck around. The parking lot that's illustrated in the back is non-existent. That's a future plan. But again, the company has been operating for a year. This is the gate that's entering into the building, which constrains the traffic down to a single lane coming in, making it more difficult for large vehicles to get in and out. Just an example of what you see when you drive by the neighborhood. There's no space for a tractor and trailer to get in off the road to deliver materials or to pick up materials. This is a, an aerial, as you saw early of the site. As, as you can see, if you're going from right to left, that's a lay down area of materials that have to be loaded in order to fulfill an order for this. Trucks have to stop there, be loaded. They make their way through the, the rest of the facility to be loaded. And, and they, they have to turn around or get turned around somehow to get out of the property. But there's just not adequate means of egress in the event that there was an emergency. Not, not for me, but maybe for their employees. Hopefully there, there, there's such thing. And it, and this is just a view as you were driving down the road, that, that in between the buildings that I showed. So you see it's very limited. There's material stored on both sides of the, of the road going in there. It's very hard to get in and out. There's no deceleration or acceleration lanes for trucks entering or leaving the site. And, and that may not be common practice for a small road like Highway six oh one. But the one thing you might be able to notice from this, this business sets in a curve. So as oncoming traffic comes in and there's a truck trying to enter or exit that facility, it's very dangerous to the community. We live in a community that has churches and people taking their kids to and from school on a daily basis. And so this is what they have to contend with. It, it's just a not, the zoning does not fit the area, the residential area that you're seeing. The, the next slide, hopefully my technology will work. I didn't take this video, but a concerned neighbor sent it to me within the last week and said, this is what happens to me when I'm going to work. Well, obviously my technology's not going to work, but you can see the, in the photograph, there's a tractor trailer that had blocked both lanes of traffic and is having to back into the site. I don't think in any community, it's a good idea for a tractor and trailer to cross two lanes of traffic in a curve to back into an industrial site. Environmental concerns. No environmental stormwater management in place. Stormwater enters local ponds and tributaries untreated. Trash and outdoor storage pollute neighborhood properties. Businesses operated seven days a week with multiple shifts, creating noise pollution from the expansion of the activities. This trash that you've, that you see in the area. Just in, in summary. The proposed use is not a fit for our community. Serious traffic issues will be compounded by approving the use of highway business conditional and expanding to manufacturing. In my opinion, property values will be negatively affected by the proposed use. Stormwater from the manufacturing without proper management jeopardizes water quality. Adjoining farms are negatively affected with trash, stormwater runoff. Currently, not what's proposed, but currently there's no screening or buffers in place nor have they been for the last year since this business has been in operation. Our community is not against business. And as was mentioned, there's been businesses that operated there for years, but they, they operated in concert with our community. There were, there was not a negative effect or caused any safety concern. But, and they shouldn't. A community shouldn't have to worry about health, safety and the way of life. Please do not allow this community to be degraded. And again, this is what our community looks like. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Haymore. Any other comments from the community? Representatives or anybody else come forward, please? We've allowed the petitioner a little latitude of time and some of the people with the slideshow, but we, we will take, try to get four or five minutes and we were happy to hear what you got to say. Tell us your name and your phone number.
I'm Donnie High, three, three, six, four, two, nine, six, three, five, four. Considering how that area was zoned to begin with, I do not understand how we get to this point. How was that allowed to even be started to be built there considering how it was zoned to begin with?
Okay, thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Yes, we have a taker coming right on up. Please, sir, give us your name and your phone. Yes, you can pass those out. Name and phone number, please.
You're not going to spam me, are you? Okay. My name's Jason Easter. Phone number's three, three, six, seven, one, zero, seven, five, seven, zero. I just want to tell you just real quickly a little bit about myself, so you can understand that I'm qualified to speak to this issue. Um, just in recent years, I at one time held a North Carolina General Contract License, an unlimited Virginia Contract License, North Carolina and Virginia P and W Phase Pest Control License and a North Carolina Home Inspector License. I understand the process. Okay? I've built a lot of things in a lot of, lot of counties, a lot of municipalities. So I know the process, what it's supposed to be from point A to point B to achieve that CO. At magic piece paper to get you the final draw as a builder. Okay? None of this happened in this case. We're talking about zoning. Okay? When we're, when we haven't mentioned the buildings. Okay? So I, I want to speak to that clearly and in detail. So everybody here can get an idea of our neighbors and what's happened. Okay? So the packet I just gave you came directly from your county. This is not opinion. It's not emotion. I spent Wednesday, Thursday and Friday last week at your county central permitting office. And I, I had all these documents presented to me from your county. Okay? So this isn't my opinion. This is what you have. This is your paper trail. Okay? This, they just said this op, this business has operated here for more than a year. The first piece of paper submitted to the county at all for any application, which was zoning, okay, was November of last year. So they operated a year with no permission. Buildings flying up all over the place. No, nothing being inspected, nothing engineered, nothing looked at whatsoever. It's a life safety issue. We're going to get to that. I have spoken with so many people in the last few days, and let me tell you who they are. Keith Cogger, your lead building official. Kevin Connor, he made the first inspection at this property on December, the, on, uh, October the 11th of last year. He went along with Jimmy, Jimmy Ashburn. I haven't spoken with him yet. I left him messages for three days. Um, he also went to that first inspection. I've talked with Adrian Gardner from Central Permitting and Zoning. I've talked with Curtis Huff. He is the investigator for this zone for the North Carolina Licensing Board for General Contractors. I've talked with David Boulay. He's, he's for this zone from North Carolina General Board of Contracts for HVAC and HVACC and Plumbing. I've also spoken with Sam Whittington. He's at the North Carolina State Department of Insurance, the Fire Marshal's Office for the state. And I've been advised, I've been advised by all of these people. And this is what I have to present to you tonight after these conversations and the paperwork that I've obtained. And looking, just simply looking at the site as I drive by it a dozen times a day. It makes me sick because I spent 20 years doing it right. I spent 20 years, sometimes I'd wait six or eight months to get a permit. You know what that does? It costs you money as a builder. You know what it does? It pisses off the homeowner. But I waited, but I waited. I went through the proper steps and I did it right. To get the CO, to get that final draw that everybody wants. They get to move in, I get to get paid and move on. That's how the process works. There's multiple steps involved way before zoning. Way before zoning, before you throw a commercial structure up that spans, I don't know how many hundreds feet, those trusses that weigh no telling how much, that require no telling what kind of support, what kind of foundation that wasn't engineered. Show me the piece of paper that says it was. Show me the piece of paper that says what size rebar is in that foundation. Show me the piece of paper from a, from a structural engineer that allows that span and allows them to do it. Show it to me. It's not there. I'm not just presenting you what the county has. I'm showing you also what you don't. I'm showing you what you don't have. There's no paper trail for anything to have been done on this property at all. You can't, you can't put a 10 by 10 shed in this county on a property without a permit. You can't, you can't build a monstrosity like they did and start welding in it, fabricating. I don't even know why we're talking about zoning. I'm glad we are. It's part of the process. But we're way past that, way past that. Okay? This is way more of a problem than just what they're allowed to do in the buildings. The buildings are a problem. The buildings, it's a life safety issue. That's what it is. The entire building code is about one thing. It's about safety. That's it. That's why it's in place. That's why there's code enforcement. That's why people like Keith Cogger have a job, because he keeps the community safe enforcing the safety codes. That's what the building inspection code is for. That's why the North Carolina State put it out. Everybody knows that. So what I want to establish tonight, who built the buildings? Who built the buildings? I called Kevin Connor. I asked him. He went to the surprise inspection. The only reason they went is because another inspector happened to drive down Old 601 and he said, we need to inspect this property. So him and Jimmy Ashburn went to the property that the very next day did, did a surprise inspection on the property. Okay? I asked him, did you bother to ask who built the buildings? No, we didn't ask that. Why? I said, do you know who built them? He said, yeah, my boss Keith told me that Firestar built the buildings. Five Star Metal Buildings is not a general contractor. They're, they're in violation of the North Carolina statutes right now. They're impersonating a general contractor and they're guilty of Article 87. Uh, they're, they're violating Article 87, uh, North Carolina General Statute 87, 87 dash 13 and 87 dash 13.1, which means that any citizen in this building can go file an injunction against them right now. And if they keep working, then they're in contempt. That's how serious it is. But they're allowed to keep working. Let's just keep pumping them out. Just keep pumping those carports out in the buildings. By their own paperwork, by their own, own admission in the zoning permit that they finally filled out, they state there's seven employees per building. How many people are in danger in those buildings right now? The county knows. The county knows. Okay? The paperwork's here that says they're telling you they've got employees in those buildings. Your inspectors have been to those sites and they've seen that nothing has been inspected about those buildings. Yet the employees continue to work in those buildings. So who is liable for that? If somebody got hurt or killed in one of those buildings, who foots the bill? Who does that? I would imagine, I'm not an attorney, I would imagine the county would share part of that liability. It's aware of the cats, you know, we, we all know what's happening. Cat's out of the bag. Okay? We know. It ha, it hasn't been done. None of the steps have been taken. When they did these inspections, okay? They did this first inspection and found that the buildings were there and they're not supposed to be there. So they put a stop worker, they put a stop pork order on the building. Everybody knows this. It's in the letter. Okay. First of all, they didn't talk to the owner. Justin doesn't own Five Star Metal Buildings. Okay? He can't make these decisions. They kept, they kept referring to him as the owner. He's not. Okay? So they put these stop pork orders up and then they go back and do another inspection on the 12th of December. And this is the one that I find the most interesting. Because at that inspection, okay, two months have passed. Two months have passed. The inspections Department and the Fire Marshal, which has lots of authority in this county, he can issue a CO or he can vaca, he can make you vacate the property. Okay? For two months, they're allowed to work on this property. Employees are in the building for two solid months. Why? Why was nothing done? Not one code enforced. The power wasn't pulled from the buildings. They didn't make them take anything down. They got the authority to make them take every screw out of that building. That's what kind of, of authority that the lead building inspector has because it's a life safety concern. But nothing happened. Why? Man, that just puzzles me because, you know, I've been involved in failed inspections as much stuff as I've built. I've, everybody's had a failed inspection. You get, you get your butt in order to get it passed. So you can move on to the next phase. Nothing happened. Two months. All of a sudden, we have three people go back out to the site. And let's look at that. Cause this is really interesting. We had Keith Cogger, the lead official, lead building inspector. We had the Fire Marshal go back out and we had Mark Marion go out. In all the years that I've built, I never had ever a commissioner grace my presence at a building site. Never. I just find it odd. So I want to end this with a few questions. Okay? Um, sorry, I got a little loud, but, uh, the more I dealt with this this week, the more pissed I got about it, just to put it bluntly. It's pathetic. It really is. Was any proper step taken by this owner when they constructed these buildings? The answer is no. And your lack of paperwork at the county proves it. Okay? Was anything done to enforce the code once they, once the county was aware that the code was being violated? No, they didn't go back for two months. They gave them a little laundry list of stuff to do, like put a fire extinguisher up, put a little set of steps here and get that stuff out from in front of the door. They went back the same day and approved it. Are you kidding me? Are you serious? Who does that? That, I'm telling y'all, I have been involved in inspections that took weeks to issue a prob, to alleviate a problem. I'm not, the same day? For these kind of buildings that they build and seven people per building inside of those buildings? Nothing was done after that? They're allowed to keep building, doing what they want to do? Why are there two sets of rules? Why are there two sets of rules? I have a set of rules that I had to follow for 20 years building all over this state and in, and in Virginia. And I followed those rules. Why don't they have to follow it? Why are there no penalties? You can pull the power, you can make them vacate the property and tear the dagum buildings down. You can do that. You can do it. So this is not where it's going to end. I've got more questions, but this is not where it's going to end. Other steps are being taken. Okay? And I was advised of these steps by the state officials that I mentioned earlier. We're filing a complaint officially with the State Fire Marshal's Office to investigate this county as to why these codes weren't enforced. As to why these businesses, why this business is still operating in those unsafe, in, in those unsafe buildings. I have a few more questions. Mr. Marion, these questions are for you. Are you a building expert? Do you know anything at all about the North Carolina Building Code, about the ADA Code, about fire safety? At all? About DOT regulations? Then why did you go to the site?
Cause I wanted to.
But why? Okay. It don't make any sense to me. Never happened to me. Okay. Just wanted to know. I just want you to vocalize your answer. Okay. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
That's sure. Yeah. You, you haven't heard the comment?
I don't.
All right.
Y'all have a good night. Thanks for your time.
Anyone else with comment concerning the request from Red Oak for rezoning? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. State your name and your phone number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Hattie Brentle. My phone number is 336-786-4413. Um, I've typed my comments, so hopefully I can keep them to about three minutes for you.
Thank you. You do just fine.
The first thing I'd like to do is ask everyone here from the local community to stand up. All that are in, that have concerns about what's taking place. We are here to ask you to deny the variance in rezoning request for Red Oak Development LLC. These requests arose because of what we see is willful disregard by the property owner. Updated Surrey County GIS mapping is how I thought these buildings were found. And if it was a drive-by by the inspections department, then I was misinformed. But they were located. A building inspection took place. A cease and desist was ordered. And as I understand, the commissioners at the December meeting may have lifted that or it took place at another time. I'm not aware. Was there a cease and desist order that was issued by the building inspections department?
None that we were involved in. I think I heard that there was, but we, we're not involved in that process typically.
What happens when that wasn't, I mean, how did that change? I think is what, what we want to understand. How did the cease and desist get lifted? Does anyone know? Okay. It was lifted. The cease and desist order was issued and then and only then did the building owner take notice. They had stated they were not aware that their tenant was a metal carport manufacturing company or a metal, metal building manufacturing company, nor that they understood that they were not zoned for a metal manufacturing company. Just as Mr. Haymore stated, there are no other HB zoning on Old Highway 601 because that road doesn't allow it. If you've ever driven down it behind a slow car, you want to spit because there are two passing zones. Two passing zones. And the area where this business is located, it is a blind curve coming up and it is, it is located, a blind hill, excuse me. And it is located in a curve. We do not, I do not fault the business owner as much as I fault the property owner because the property owners are both contractors. And they are fully aware of permitting and requirements, just as Mr. Easter stated. Last Monday night, the planning board did vote five to zero. As we had a list of the questions they were asking, true or false? Does it have an impact, positive impact on the community, negative, et cetera? Five to zero, but we're here today. And I, I didn't understand the process of why it now has to come before you as our Board of Commissioners. But Mr. Jones tried his best to explain that to all of us that night at the meeting. Adherence to the rules and enforcement of the rules should apply to everyone equally. Again, just as Mr. Easter stated. The planning board voted five to zero. I hope you take that into consideration. I understand there's a new site plan. I don't think that it matters to, to this community. I think the business is, doesn't have anything to do with the, the, it's not zoned, it's not sized. They re, um, they changed their maps to make it a 10 acre request where they have almost 30. If you approve the 10 acre request, they'll be back and it'll be eventually a 30 acre request. Still on a blind hill, still in a curve, still on a two lane rural highway. Also, based upon, and Mr. Jones, you help me if I'm saying this incorrectly. Based upon Code Section 154006 dash 14, which is called the intent of zoning districts. It states that HB zoning should have direct access to major roadways and their sites should have access to public water and sewer. That's in your code section on your website. As I said, no other businesses are zoned HB on 601 for, Old Highway 601 for a reason. But there are 190 in the county, all located elsewhere. Mr. Tate did state in a letter to you that there had been 35% growth and I can understand their ability to build bigger or to do whatever it may be. But again, we are asking for you to deny this request and to understand that what the decision you make is going to establish a precedent. I also have talked to numerous people and everyone knows when I call what I'm talking about. This is not just something that comes to this meeting that we all ignore and that just passes or does it and it goes away. Our community cares. We're here. Um, and we would like your consideration to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. George.
I'll be brief. I only need 30 or 40 minutes.
Yes, sir. We'll take that 30, 40.
Uh, I'm just gonna, I'd like to offer a couple of items of clarifications.
You already given us your name, phone number tonight.
Uh, have not. Corey George. Uh, my number's 336-422-6741. Um, you've heard, I'll be, I'll be as brief as I possibly can. Uh, we've heard a couple of concerns about traffic and, uh, just wanted to make a couple of comments regards to that. Similar comments that I had made at the planning board in regards to our site plan and certainly agree that there are traffic issues as it currently is. And I, I think that's what we're trying to solve with the new site plan associated with the conditional rezoning is it's going to force the tenant and it's going to force the landowner in order to make these improvements, which are going to help the traffic flow. Even this third revision is even an, we feel like an addition to, uh, improve traffic. We've got room for two-way. Um, I think we're going to modify, assuming if we were able to successfully rezone the property, we were, we would force them to modify their operations a little bit in order to account for that traffic. Um, there are some comments in regard to stormwater. Surrey County is not a phase two stormwater county. Nothing triggers stormwater, permanent stormwater regulations in the county unless it's a water supply watershed, trout water or some high quality water. Old 60, Old Highway 601 is none of those things. So there's nothing, and this is extremely common in rural counties. You see permanent stormwater required in, in large cities and counties like Wake County, Forsyth County and that type of thing. So no, no permanent stormwater is required. Though for the erosion control, if they were to move forward with the construction of the Though for the erosion control, if they were to move forward with the construction of the parking lot or any improvements, they'd be required to, uh, meet Department of Environmental Quality Erosion Control Regulations Disturbed Acre, Disturbed Over An Acre, whatever. There's construction stormwater requirements for that that they would have to do. In regards to the buffers, currently there are no buffers. Those buffers are to be installed. They will provide the visual screens in accordance with the county ordinance from adjacent property owners. That includes opaque fences, that includes shrubbery, uh, trees, natural buffers where appropriate. There's no acceleration or deceleration lanes. Uh, nothing here really that would trigger those. Typically, those are triggered by DOT. DOT would require those. Those are more of a trips-per-day type thing in regard to traffic flow. With the site plan as proposed, and even in the revised version, the driveways are certainly wide enough. We accounted for 12-foot lanes, so 24-foot, that is a full two-lane of travel. I mean, most of our two-lane roads here are 12-foot lanes or even 10-foot lanes. So the, the lanes coming here would be as wide as what we're able to circulate them through on the site. So I just, if there's, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. George. Anyone else? On behalf of, come right on up, state your name, phone number.
You're okay?
Yes, ma'am. Charlotte, your name and your phone number, please.
So my name is Charlotte Dolly Hi, phone number three, three, six, three, two, five, five, two, two, seven. Um, I'm a property owner, one of the property owners that Mr. Tate referred to, within one mile of the Five Star Red Oak Development property. I chose to live in this community because of its rural agricultural farming nature. Um, I'm here to ask you to vote against the rezoning of this property to keep our community as it is somewhat. Um, there are more appropriate places within our county, other properties, industrial parks, um, for businesses such as this, that is not Little Wall White Plains. White Plains community is not the appropriate place for this. I'm speaking as a parent and on behalf of other parents that's asked me to speak for them, of the White Plains community, that, that agree with me by saying that this is not the location for this business and that we want a place for our children and grandchildren to be able to farm and hunt and fish without this business growth right in the middle of it. If this is voted yes and y'all go for it, that's all going to change. Uh, one little decision can change all this for future generations of our small community. I also feel confident that if you rezon this, as others have said, the property at the proposed acreage, that at some point, an increase of acreage would be asked for. They can say this acreage is uninhabitable or unable to build on, but these two men are two of the most capable men to make that happen in this county. I, um, they, they say they're growing at 35% in a year and all of that. I, I don't know where they get their numbers, but growth is growth. They're going to ask for more property. I can easily see the business going over the acreage, not even asking for additional zoning due to the order of operations that have been mentioned thus far. There's been some conversations briefly in the previous meetings about setting, um, business days and hours for Five Star to abide by. If that's the case, and we discuss that matter, who will police it? When they're loading out trucks on a Saturday or Sunday morning, do we call you guys? Ask you guys? I, I don't know. I don't know this order of operations. Is it citizens arrest? I mean, seriously, what do we do? Also, as it's been mentioned before, it sets a precedent that the citizens of Surrey County do not have to abide by the rules and regulations set forth by the state and county unless somebody drives by and catches you. That's not the reputation I want as a Surrey County citizen, and that's not the reputation you guys want. I don't want to just sit here and dwell on the safety issues and the traffic flow. We all know it's not right. We all know it's not safe. But I do have a picture that I took very recently of what I had to stop for. And that happened, I brought my car to the pickup truck. Picture of the pickup truck. And this is a normal, stable truck. I also have a 17-year-old son that takes that route to school every day, driving. So for that 17-year-old son, that's abiding by the state rules and regulations of speed limits, he should not have to worry about topping a knoll, taking a curve, and a tractor and trailer facing you. Picture says worth more than a thousand words. The Five Star business plan thus far has been just to do it and not ask for permission or maybe ask for forgiveness later. That's not an opinion. You've got the paperwork that shows it. As already detailed noted by other speakers tonight, county, state, regulations and rules have been a total disregard. I'm certain this is not the type of neighbors that I want and not that you want. Imagine this in your backyard happening daily. The zoning board has unanimously voted against it and the new site plan and the other site plans and whatever will come next. I hope you guys follow suit. Let me add, as a business owner as well, small, very small business owner in White Plains, that Mr. Jason Tate here tried to discreetly point a finger in my face, saying that my business was similar to his, which is 100% untrue. The number of employees data, I'm not going all over it. But what he has said is not true. My business, Mr. Tate, is zoned accurately and appropriately, because I went through the proper channels.
Say, address the mic, please.
I'm sorry, it's hard to talk. If I want to make a point, I want to look at somebody in the eye.
Yes, ma'am.
My business is zoned accurately. I went through the proper measures. My business is zoned home occupation of a commercial nature. It's on my property that I own, that I don't rent. I did this with the assistance of the former zoning board chair, Kim Bates. I went through the proper channels. Also have another business I recently purchased in Salome, which is the salt storage rail yard right at the Yakkin Line. I just purchased that. I spent a week doing my due diligence to make sure it was zoned properly prior to purchase. Taxes were correct. If I'm going to have my name on it, I'm going to try my best to make sure it's right. Land surveys were done prior. Easements and setbacks and variances, all of that took care of prior to purchase. So if you want to throw some mud in somebody's face, make sure my zoning is right. And I've got mine right, had it right, and it's right on my other business. Do you guys have any questions for me? Comments? As a mama and a business owner, I try to do it right. I may not get it right every time. May not, may not get it right tomorrow. But I try.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Yeah. Tell you what, while we died, I don't know if we can or not during the hearing. Uh, we've had a request for a bathroom break, but... Yeah, let's, uh, let's wind up any other comments. I'm going to see if we have any more comments concerning the rezoning request. Okay. No more comments. The public hearing is now closed. We're going to take a quick five-minute, 10-minute recess. We're going to allow time to go to the bathroom, then we're going to come back and proceed. Thank you.
All right. The public hearing has been closed, so please understand we cannot allow any more public comment. As much as I know some have thought about some more questions, but now the board will move back into addressing this issue. And it looks like to me, gentlemen, the charge before us here tonight is to get a consensus on what this board wants to do about the request from Wet Red Oak to rezone the property that we've talked about here for the last hour and a half. So I'm just going to go down the line. I'm going to allow Commissioner comments and try to get a consensus on which way we're going. Commissioner Mary?
Listening to all the comments tonight, I don't see how we can proceed on with it. With rezoning.
Your consensus is you think we would probably deny the request or reject it. Commissioner Goins?
Based on the recommendation from planning board.
Commissioner Johnson?
I'll go along with what the planning board
Mr. Harris?
I would concur with the planning board, and I will add that the fact that there's been multiple construction projects over there without any consent of Surrey County, any permitting inspections and so forth, doesn't pour the oil of gladness over my head. And there's multiple things here that give me cause for concern, so I will concur with the planning board if this comes to a vote.
Okay, I intend to bring this to a vote right here and now, and the reason I asked for consensus, the way we do these votes, typically we don't go down the line and ask for consensus. We go to motion and a second and discussion and all that things. But because the statutes require that this board adopt a statement regarding consistency and reasonableness, just like the charge was of the planning board earlier, I wanted to get a consensus on where we were going, and I'll weigh in my two cents. I concur with the rest of your opinions that this board does not adopt the recommendation for approval and that we do reject this zoning amendment request, this zoning, the rezoning change.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, one thing that y'all need to keep in the back of your mind, I understand you're about to vote, is if you deny the application, what's the exit strategy as far as getting them out?
Yeah, I think if it's okay with you, I'm going to get a vote on what we do.
Okay.
And then we're going to get another consensus on how we mitigate the outcome of that vote. Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
And I think council recommended this approach to you that you're following before, but actually our code says, you know what your consensus is now.
Yes.
You're going to deny this.
Yes.
Before you do that, you need to ask yourselves, is this consistent with the Surrey County land use plan? And it is or is not, and is it reasonable in the public interest? It is or is not. And Andrew will write that down and prepare consistency statement for the chairman to execute later. And your findings to support that can be very brief, and as a matter of fact, the findings of the planning board already are very brief.
And this finding needs to be in form of a motion made here.
Well, I think you need to do that first, and the motion would be that this board finds the petition, rezone this property submitted by, submitted and for review tonight is not consistent with the Surrey County land use plan, is not reasonable, and is not in the public interest because it's not consistent with the zoning and use of the surrounding area, is incompatible, its impact would be incompatible with the rural nature and the agriculture and residential use of the area, and it's not reasonable to subject the county to these burdens without any other benefit.
I believe we have a unanimous consensus that says this board recommends rejection of this zoning amendment because the amendment is inconsistent with the Surrey County land use plan, is not reasonable, and is not in the public interest. Because this request is not consistent with the zoning and use of the surrounding area, it is incompatible impact with rural nature and agricultural and residential use of the area, and the requested uses would not be compatible with the surrounding community, reasonable or in the public interest. And because of that reason, may I?
You need to make a motion to adopt that.
May I ask for a motion to adopt option B in your packet that reads what I just stated? I'm looking for a motion, gentlemen, to reject the request to rezone based on that statement of consistency and reasonableness that I just said is the reason why we rejected it. Do I hear a motion?
So first, versus the motion to say you approve that what I just said and what you said back again, and Andrew will type over for you this week, that as chairman, that it is not consistent and is not reasonable and not in the public interest for the following reasons that you've already put in the record, and Andrew will hear that. Does someone want to make a motion to adopt that reasonable statement?
I'm looking for a motion to adopt the statement that's just been read by me and advised by or explained by council. Looking for a motion, gentlemen, for this board statement regarding consistency and reasonableness with this recommendation.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
That motion would be to reject the rezoning request based on the A4. What would this motion be, Mr. Johnson?
That's what has been stated by our attorney Howard Jones and also our chairman Van Tucker.
Yes.
All right.
Just to adopt the statement.
We have a motion to adopt the statement. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record show none opposed. It is unanimous.
Next would be a motion to deny. Next motion would be to deny the petition to rezone this property before the board tonight.
All right, I'll make that motion that we deny the request of the petition for this property to be rezoned. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Goins? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
If I could, please, just to distinguish, this board is not the Surrey County Inspections Department. And the time period that the board needs to be transparent about community does not inhibit Keith or the inspections department from its stop work orders or proceeding any way that Raleigh says they need to proceed. The time period is we now have a zoning, rezoning request denied. They're not allowed to continue this use zoning wise. So the board needs to consider and be transparent with the community, how long should Red Star have?
Five Star.
Sorry, Five Star. Apologies. Five Star have to vacate the use from this premises. So that's the discussion you need to have, and then?
Yes, and Ed, we'll have that discussion and we'll get a consensus. Will that require formal action to be voted on?
Yes. You will need to, I mean, I figure you will need to discuss among yourselves what is reasonable. I mean, I don't know the scope of this operation. It appears to be a pretty big plant, but I don't know what their inventory is. I don't know what's in there. I don't know where they're going to take it. But I would recommend that the board use the reasonableness standard to have them evacuate. I mean, I don't know, it's 36, 30, 60, 90 days? I don't know what's reasonable. And I just, I know that the board wants to be reasonable, but they also need to understand that these guys have been operating illegally for over a year and with impunity. And so that might temper the timeframe. I don't know.
All right, well, we're going to get into that discussion, and gentlemen, we have taken action to deny the rezoning request. This board, I won't not speak for you, but I'll just say my opinion on it. You know, the task before this board tonight was a tall one. We made a decision. It's not one that's pleasing to everybody. It's not one we thought would be pleasing to everybody. It's not one we'd made up our minds about before we got here. It's one that we have decided. There's going to be some people that's happier than others, but the board has taken that on, but we've made that hard decision, and now we want to make a merciful decision, and that is, since we have voted to deny or reject the rezoning request, we want to talk about how much mercy, if for lack of a better word, can we give to this establishment that seems to be caught up in the middle, that has a business that's going on that has been basically told you cannot go on here legally any longer because you haven't been legal to start with, and so, gentlemen, I'm going to take that up. What kind of timeframe do you guys have in mind? Commissioner Goins?
Forty-five days.
Commissioner Marion?
Cease operations, cease manufacturing, and forty-five days to vacate.
Commissioner Johnson?
Cease manufacturing, thirty days.
Commissioner Harris?
Cease manufacture and thirty days.
Cease manufacturing immediately and gone in thirty days.
That, I concur with Commissioner Johnson.
Looks like we got a big split right there, so.
I mean, I'm not going to fall out with anybody over it. I mean, you know, I'm not set in stone.
You know, I don't have much latitude here, but I do have a split.
You're the swing vote.
Swing vote. I say we cease operations and we give them the two gentleman's consensus with forty-five days to vacate. I'm looking for a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion for Commissioner Goins to cease operations and vacate within forty-five days. Second, Commissioner Marion, any discussion?
Counselor, does the fact that we've ordered cease operations?
Clarification, you're not, you're voting.
Voting only.
Yeah, you're voting on the policy of the board. The director of development services, who I represent, is sitting right there, Director Needham. Tomorrow morning, he will be writing a letter, a notice of violation to Five Star and to the property owner that you are in violation, and we normally say you have a step that you can take to correct this, which is one would be rezoned. Can't say that. That option's gone. So it will be, you're in violation. You need to cease operations and?
Upon receipt of this communication?
Yes, so I'm trying to understand, are you saying they need to cease?
Well, making, manufacturing.
They need to stop manufacturing tomorrow? And then they have forty-five, or they need to stop and?
Cease manufacturing immediately and forty-five days to vacate.
Yes.
And it's going to depend on when the letter gets there, you know?
And depend on, and does this, in your opinion, does this minimize any sort of legal, minimize the legal exposure to Surrey County?
I see no legal exposure to Surrey County.
What we've done, we've just addressed the zoning issue only. We're, this is not in regards to inspection. Mr. Johnson, I'll ask you to help clarify that.
Eddie, these guys are in violation. They've been in violation for a year.
I understand all that. I just.
But I mean, I don't see how they would have a. I don't see how they have any.
We're sorry, go ahead, Ed.
No, I just don't see that they have any leg to stand on as far as county liability. I mean, we've been patient with them. We've worked with them, and they have neglected to follow our guidance, and you know, that's their problem.
So let me just clarify something.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
This has nothing to do with Keith Cogger and inspections and stop work, stop work. We're cutting the power. He's going to do what he's going to do. What I want to know is, just to be transparent with the community, we send a letter out, and we'll probably hand deliver this as opposed to just mailing it, and we're probably going to post it on the building. Now, we get a phone call back. How long do we have to stop this? Now, we usually, because it's the first they've heard of it, and because they also have an option to go in and try an alternative, either get a special use permit or do a rezoning that will cure it. That's gone now. They've gone that route. So I just want to be transparent. The board's preference, it's the same motion on what preference for Mr. Needham is in terms of how much, how much time to give in that notice of violation. Now, he's ultimately going to do what he, what he wants to do. He's the director. But you need to communicate to him what your preference is as far as, do they stop now? Okay, tomorrow, and do they then have forty-five days to leave? And if that is your preference, communicate that publicly because we've got both sides of the issue, so we need to have our expectations set.
Howard, does that include removing the buildings or in setback violations?
No. No, the buildings are a whole nother issue. Now, if you want to, if you want to address that, okay, Ed, I mean, that's.
That's not a good, that's not a good thing to address tonight.
No, I don't think it is because they can still go back, they can still go back and ask for variance for these buildings, not for this use. Okay, but how far do we have to move these buildings back from these setbacks? That's not before this board tonight.
No, and I think, you know, you've made a good distinction between planning and inspections. And inspections can do whatever it wants to do, but I would encourage them to be consistent with the board action so that we don't turn the power off tomorrow. We allow them. We, we allow them, if it's forty-five days, if it's thirty days, you know, to get out. I mean, they, they, they can't remove their materials in the dark. And there are no windows in that building.
And that's not safe either.
Yeah, but, but, but I think this board has entertained a motion and passed it to say we want work to stop tomorrow or on receipt of this letter.
Yeah, manu- manufacturing will stop. Yeah, yeah.
Manufacturing will stop.
The, the, the question is, you know, when do they get their crap out? Uh.
I, I think this board has said.
They can still continue to load what they've.
They can load trucks and, and be in the process of complying for forty-five days.
Okay, that's good.
And so Marty, are you, the, the communication is good here. We, we have no misunderstandings.
Liquid data materials.
Okay.
That voted on?
No, we need to vote.
Okay, we need to vote. Discussion's over. Looking for a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not opposed unanimous decision to end manufacturing immediately and to leave the premises on or before forty-five days.
This use.
Yes, for this use, yes. All right.
Howard, Marty, you have another item.
Okay.
I have, I have a question still concerning this, what we've done tonight.
Well.
I already gave a little latitude.
Well, that's about what we've already done.
Yeah.
The lawyer mentioned at the very beginning, some ifs. You got a new map over there. Then you said it takes twelve months, you know, for them to bring it back forward again. You said we might could have some latitude if we wanted to. All, these are all ifs, but I'd like to know, uh, you know, the petitioners had the opportunity to withdraw, they didn't. So the action's been taken, been taken now.
Correct.
So what, what's, what's in store for the future? Anything?
For the.
My question.
For the landowner.
Or if they got a new plot and they've even said a few residents, a few neighbors, you know, like that, it's better or whatever. So what goes on now? If the petitioners, what do they get to do with that new plot? Is my question.
Well, I mean, first of all, there's a practical problem that the use, the use has to stop tomorrow.
Right.
This tenant is going to need to find another, another place to do business in short order.
Right.
That can't, so going through the process of having, of applying to this board to give an exception for one year. Right? And then going back in front of the planning board with a public hearing and then coming back in front of this board with a public hearing. The business has got to be someplace else before then. So that's not going to really, in my opinion, I mean, they're afraid to do what they want. But in my opinion, I don't see the utility of that for a Five Star. However, the owner still has a piece of property. And it is zoned CB and RA. So putting aside, putting aside the setback issues on the property and the permit problems with Keith. Putting aside that, the owner is allowed to engage in uses and run out to people that want to engage in uses that are allowed in CB on the portions of the property that are zoned community business or allowed in RA on portions of the property that are zoned RA. That's number one. Number two, Commissioner, the, uh, the applicant, if the applicant finds uh, another tenant who wants to do something that is not allowed in CB or that portion of the RA, then the applicant has two avenues. One is to, um, is to wait a year and come in for another rezoning. Okay? Or they may file a, file a written request. I believe that's usually through, uh, sent to the county manager to be put on an agenda. Okay? And it would just say, we're requesting that you find that you allow us to ask for a rezoning quicker than one year. Under this section of the code, it would be put on the agenda and this board would then vote whether or not to allow them to, to, to ask for a rezoning in less than one year. If they have any questions, they can ask on how to do that and what the petitioner need to say and what the best way to position themselves to do that. Because we tell all citizens, when they say, what's the process? How do I go about doing this? What does this mean? We're free and Marty's free to answer questions. And if not, then Marty will consult Ed and I. If they do that and this board then holds a meeting and we would, you know, we've got email addresses. We're going to send out emails and to everyone that's asked. Then they're going to get triggered by that, that, that email process. They're going to know that Red Oak is coming back. So they'll, it's transparent. And you'll know that it's going to be a request for the five county commissioners to consider whether or not to allow this quicker or whether or not they have to wait one year. And you'd hold.
And, and, and my recommendation would be if they do make an application for an exception to the one-year rule that the Board of Commissioners refer it back to the Planning Department with the Planning Board um, to determine whether the proposal is credible and whether the Board of Commissioners should support it.
My question was, I just want the community and others to understand.
Yes.
That what the, what could be the petitioner, the owners of the land. I got thirty acres sitting over there and what mine doing something with it, I own thirty acres. I feel like the landowner has a right to do something with their land.
It's currently zoned CB.
They own the land.
It's correct.
And, uh, so, but anyway, they got to decide if it changes zoning or not change. Go through all the proper sites. But I just wanted the community to know that, you know, you know, there's still land there that, that the landowners would probably love to utilize somehow or another. But as of tonight, the current business is, is, is done with and rezoning is, is been denied. So I just want to make sure they all understand a little bit about what could happen in the future.
Yes, and I think that if anyone has not put their email up what we normally do. Now, if there's a request to accelerate this one-year period, that's not a zoning request. That's not an amendment, so we're not going to advertise that. That's just going to be a hearing. But we're going to send out emails to everyone who's asked to know about that. If there's another, and so that's a, this is another step of transparency. Put your name on that list if you want to be kept in the loop.
Yep.
And, but understand as, as Mr. Johnson said, these people have a legal right to use their property as it is currently zoned. And they can proceed with all uses that are permitted under the code.
All right. Thank you very much. I believe that concludes our business concerning the Red Oak Development LLC request tonight. And I am moving on to you, Director Marty Needham from Developmental Services on the Scenic Byway Standards Committee.
Good evening again. As you all know, we passed a scenic byway overlay.
Okay, just took a one-minute standing pause.
Yeah. Sure.
Left my notes.
All right. Appreciate you folks input.
We appreciate y'all and y'all's hard work. And your wisdom.
Thank you.
And I apologize for wanting to look a man in the eye when he tells a lie only. Put that on the rest.
We have.
We have people complaining to come here and on the issue. Well, it's hard.
Sorry.
Well, I'm just saying if there is a reason, nobody's seen that, so I'm just.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we had a standing momentary break. Mr. Needham, when you get an opportunity, we'll proceed back. Yes, ma'am, go ahead and feel free to sign the email if. Put that, put that, put that on the table at the end of the other table there, Marty, not at the podium. People come up. If anybody wants to sign up for email, you feel free to come on up and sign. It has not done so. Go ahead, Mr. Needham.
Okay. As you know, last April, we passed a new overlay district for the Tarras Town Scenic Byway. And there was a panel of citizens created to create some extra rules, so to speak, for that overlay district. And you have before you a draft proposal of those extra rules. And we're just asking for your guys' stamp of approval, omission of something, addition of something, if you so see fit. And.
All right. Discussion.
Marty and the members, and the working on the part of this. They've reached, they think, they think they've done what you want to put down a list. Did they go too far or did not? Or not, just the new part of feedback.
Well, I'll just give a little feedback, uh, and I'll get you. I, I don't see anything wrong with the, um, height of the building, forty feet. I think that's their own target. These thirty-two square foot monumental style signs, I don't see any issue with that. I really don't have any issue, the lumens on the light. Mr. Harris, I'm surprised you're not all over this, especially the sign part. Uh, what I do raise a question about is just for me, it appears that the increased minimum yard setbacks or the, um, additional standards for special use permits, two and a half times of the, um, minimum setbacks that are already required. I, I wonder if, if we couldn't say one and a half times or two times and you gentlemen weigh in on anything you see here. That's my feedback. Any others? Mr. Johnson, you got any feedback?
Well, I, I, I see, I see what you're saying there. I, I totally like the, that they've got together and come this far. I, I don't have any qualms of anything that's, that y'all discussed and put on paper here.
Okay.
Along with it like it is.
All right.
If you have a concern, Com- uh, Mr. Chairman, about that, two and a half times, I, I would go up, uh, just.
What is?
A little bit more.
What is, what is the setback for a special use? The feet, Marty, do you know? Increase minimum yard setback.
I think it's six hundred from the center of the road. It's where the overlay district lies in each direction. Yeah.
We're talking that setback. We can't change that.
No, but that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about how far the building needs to be from the highway on that six hundred feet.
Set the highway each way, six hundred feet is what we talked about.
Yeah, I'm just going to give feedback, two and a half times might be a little far. Two times might be all right with me. That's just my feedback.
It's going to depend on how it's zoned because it's, it's different for different zoning districts. There are some CB, I have to look in the code book. To forty, forty, forty feet in the front, normally twelve feet on the sides for RA and twenty feet in the back. Twenty-five.
That's saying, okay, so that times two point five. So instead of maybe forty feet in the front, it just wasn't devoted to be hundred. Um, so the question is, that too much?
Well, my suggestion was maybe two times. There's some difference, but maybe twice as much as a bunch more, twice as much as twice as much. So that was just my feedback. Commissioner Goins? Either way. Mr. Marion? You guys good?
What?
With any of this, all of this, none of this?
Well, you know, uh, yeah, I, I mean, uh, no, I, I do have some comments here.
All right, well, just come forward without.
The, um, it says no neon lighting. I like that.
Yeah, I figured.
No blinking lights. I like that. Now, we have had, um, my rub is digital signage. And a lot of fire departments have put up, in my opinion, what is the most hideous looking signs I've ever seen in my life. And, and they blink all kinds of things and, you know, I mean, some people might think it's good. But I, you know, in a rural community like mine, you got a neon light going off all night long. It says drive safely, you know? That just don't sit well with me. So what about digital? I don't, I don't think any digital flashing all night signage ought to be on this thing here. I mean, I just.
Let's just say no electronic signs on these scenic byways.
Well, I, that would tickle me to death.
Well, that's some feed, that's two feedback per person. Does anybody else want to weigh in on that? On the scenic byways we're talking about?
And is there a, it? So thirty-two square feet is basically a.
Eight by four.
Yeah, four by eight. Thank you, Larry. I'm sorry, I went to Banner Town Elementary School. I didn't do too good there. But, uh, but, so a four by eight, uh, that's about as big as I'd want it, I mean, in a scenic byway. And I think it would, it certainly wouldn't be any more, you know, uh, an eight feet tall, but, uh.
If you could feel like they might consider eliminating all electronic signage, you could live with three, two feet.
Yeah, I'll live with the rest of it if we can get rid of electronic signs.
All right, I, I can, that's my feedback as well. You guys good with that? No?
Well, we, we're, what we're talking about is from Banner Town to the Stokes County line, Westfield. Is that correct? Yeah, I, I concur.
I guess the next step, Howard, we'll redraft this, you know, to come as a text amendment before the board.
I, I think, I mean, it's.
Wait a minute, we have some.
Yep, I think that's good. All right, thank you, Marty. Uh, yes, sir, you may be excused. Thank you, Howard. Can we go with?
Wait a minute, I think we need to vote on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. You are excused.
Will we be in any legal jeopardy with you leaving?
Head zone.
Ed, you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Have Ed's checked out?
No, I'm here.
Okay, okay, we're good. You're excused, Mr. Jones. Okay, um, I believe, uh, Nick Brown. Communications Director. Director Brown, come on up. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Nick.
So I applied with, uh, for a grant from the nine-one board for portable radios. Um, and we were lucky to, uh, receive those. Um, and they have issued us a, um, agreement that would have to be signed by the county if we were to, uh, take the radios. The grant amount is for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Can you, uh, condense that agreement? Is this rather lengthy?
Yep, so we are approved for six positions, um, in the county. Um, they're going to allow us to have one handheld radio in case our primary radios go down. One at each station. Um, they'll allow us to have two batteries for those radios. One will stay with it, of course, the other one would go to Stokes County, to Danbury, to the backup center. That would give us two chargers as well, one for Stokes, one for us. And then, um, they would pay for the programming cost per radio, um, the encryption and all that and the maintenance for the first twelve months of it. Now, the agreement would be that we would have to keep these radios on site and they can only be used by our department. Can't be used by EMS, the sheriff's office or anybody, but communications people for that time period of thirty-six months. After that one year, any kind of maintenance that those radios would need, the county would have to pay for out of the general fund. So and they would be, um, they do do inspections, um, from time to time from the board just to. We just done one, um, I think it was in August. Um, and they come by and they just. Um, and they come by and they just check our equipment and stuff and make sure that we're doing everything to statute. Um, and just make sure those radios would have to be there. If not, we would, they would penalize us and county would have to pay for them.
Okay, uh, Chris, what kind of action needs to be taken for us to receive this forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollar grant?
Motion to, uh, receive the grant.
Okay, yeah, yeah, Stuart, you hear us, Ed. Do we need a motion to receive this grant? Yep. Yes. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to receive this grant for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars to, uh, communications. Okay, have a motion for Commissioner Goins. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Marion. Any discussion?
Well, I think, I think as I read it, that, uh, we're, we're, we're taking care of them ourselves. I mean, we get, we getting them and we, and we getting them for the forty-nine thousand something, but once they're ours, if, if any's a problem with them or make, it's just, it's our, it's on us.
After the first, first year.
Yes, sir.
After the first year. Okay. Well, I'm fine, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr., wait, are we still in discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we are. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I wanna say that I'd like the non-discrimination clause in this, uh, contract. I think it's very appropriate. I think it's a good contract. Um, I also like that it, uh, specifically in section, uh, page fifteen, number twenty-one, section J, under illegal aliens, it says, no cost incurred as a result of work performed by illegal aliens shall be reimbursed versment by grant funds and requires to be, uh, E-Verify requirement. I think it's a very good contract and I commend you, sir. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor to receive the grant forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yes. Okay, uh, Penny Harrison, our tax administrator, please come on up. Hello, Penelope?
Hello, I have one item tonight, and I had an assignment last meeting to get some information on the, uh, preferred bidder if, for the foreclosure program. And, uh, I have included it in your packet. And the preferred bidder program is something that the Kenya Law Firm offers for Surrey County. And they, excuse me, they offer this to help Surrey County for the properties that, um, are, they're in danger of, um, being sold back to the county. And if someone is interested in that piece of property and are willing to, uh, propose a, a bid, and if it covers all costs of the foreclosure fees and things like that, then they will, um, take the fee and put it in the trust fund. And then they will sign a contract. And then after the foreclosure goes through the process, then the bid will start out for, uh, the amount of the, of the preferred bidder amount. And then if there isn't any, um, bids that day, then when it goes through the upset bid period, it will still remain in the preferred bidder amount. And after the ten days, if no one upsets the bid, then it will, I mean, the preferred bidder will win the piece of property. And it still can be upset bid during that ten days.
Mr. Johnson, does that satisfy your question?
Uh, thank you. I just, I, I didn't hear the word pervert, preferred bidder before.
Yes, sir.
I read what you found out, and, uh, so this gentleman was, uh, he paid his money up, so he's a paid, he's a preferred bidder. And so we've already got a bid on that property.
Yes, sir.
Down to.
Is he happy?
I don't know. He ain't heard from him one time. He ain't, he ain't got his money back, so I guess he's pretty happy.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
Whenever the time comes, uh, he's, we've already got one bid on the property.
Yes, sir. And if, if for some reason that he does not win the bid, he will receive his money back.
So you're requesting that this board approve the opening preferred bid and permission to proceed to finalize the foreclosure tonight?
Yes, we're gonna have a sale on March the twenty-first. And if, uh, this board approves this sale, then I'm gonna ask the Kenya Law Firm to add this to the sale for March twenty-first.
March twenty-first at courthouse?
Yeah, the Judicial Center. Yes, sir.
That's what I'm, yeah, Judicial, that's right.
All right, gentlemen, looking for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the opening preferred bid and permission and tell, for Penny to proceed to finalize foreclosure.
Okay, you have a motion, looking for a second? To approve the opening preferred bid? Do I hear a second?
Can we do that tonight? We can? Okay, yeah, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Marion and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion?
Penny, when you go out, do you do that in the lobby or on the steps outside?
In the lobby.
In the lobby? And who does that, in your office?
Um, I go out, well, I go to the Judicial Center and also another employee that helps me with the foreclosures.
But Kenya doesn't send anybody out here from Asheville?
Yes.
Oh, they do send someone out here?
Two people.
Two people?
Yes.
On a, on a simple little foreclosure like this?
Yes.
They'll send two people from Asheville out here?
Yes. No, we'll have four that day.
Four, okay, so it's kinda beneficial to the county to bunch up a lot of these together, I'm assuming?
Well, they still charge the same, you know, each foreclosure is still considered individually.
It's, okay, it's a set price?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks. I was just curious to how that worked.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? There being none. All in favor of the motion to approve the opening preferred bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Penny. All right, moving right along, uh, Richard Young, Eric Southern. Uh, with Eric with the EMS and, um, Emergency Services Director and Richard Young with the Rescue Squad Association. Thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner, thank you for letting us be up here and speak tonight. Uh, we're presenting the amended contract with the Surrey County EMS. Um, do you guys have a copy of this in your budget packet?
Okay.
Um, we are amending, um, section three, subsection D, uh, where it states Surrey County EMS should be responsible for acquiring said ambulance should the squads not be available to bring the a, ambulance to the EMS stations. And we are also amending, um, subsection H to where it goes down to where it says county shall reimburse the squad at a rate of five dollars per mile from the time Surrey County EMS picks up the borrowed vehicle through the time it is returned. The old, um, forgive me, I do not have a copy of the old, uh, contract as it stands right now. But the subsection D, um, just stated in the existing contract that, um, when using the rescue squad vehicle personnel, EMS shall utilize vehicle personnel or equipment primarily for non-emergency convalescent transports. We just changed that to say that they are responsible for coming and picking up the apparatus that they say that's, they need to use. And then for the subsection H, the current contract stands as we, we are reimbursed at a rate of two dollars per mile. We are just upping that to five dollars per mile just due to inflation and wear and tear on our vehicles. Any questions?
Gentlemen, any questions?
Hello, Eric, do we run out of ambulances in use of rescue squad?
Uh, honestly, we run out of ambulances about once a week, uh, but we make do. Squads are going to stand by for us. And us actually using the ambulances, last year we used them a total of four times.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? I'm good. Okay, I guess we need a motion to approve the amendment to this contract. So, gentlemen, I am gonna entertain a motion to approve the amendment requested to the contract with Surrey County Association Rescue Squads. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Harris. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Marion. Any discussion?
Help me in detail. How long's this contract good for?
Uh, the contract is good for, um,
Two years.
Two years, and then automatically renews. Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
At each of your seats, um, there's a memo from North State Design Group. Mr. Chilton is here. He requested that the board consider amending the agenda to add this item. It were, addresses a number of change orders for the Health Department renovation project.
I don't see that.
Here, I hear that. Guess I did.
No.
So.
If you wanna take this up, you'll have to vote.
Amend the agenda.
Yeah, consider voting to amend the agenda.
Yep. Gentlemen, I'm looking to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to allow, um, Tony Chilton with North State to come before the board with concern tonight. Looking for a motion? Amend?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second.
Second.
Second, Bill Goins. Any discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Come on up, Mr. Chilton.
Who's there? Tony Chilton, three, three, six, four, one, six, five, seven, two, seven. Uh, thank you for seeing me on short notice. Thank you, Sandy. Uh, and Chris. Um, we've got six items. Three items are straightforward. And I felt like at this time, so we can keep progress on the job, that we would go ahead and present. There are three that we want additional investigation before we, before we present. Looking for additional information, additional pricing. And one in particular that was listed as an add alternate on the mechanical. It's, uh, not a question of the cost. It's a question of where the cost should inc, should reside. Uh, it's part of the existing building infrastructure that was determined that it was not in operation uh, when the renovation, um, demolition took place and it was listed as an add off, so it would have to be added. That is an item that's tabled for, for later as we find more information. That will not hold up the construction process that's going on. Uh, the three items that I have, uh, item number seventeen is casework revisions, taking some of the casework out, putting casework in and adding doors and shelves and places, and especially doing a walkthrough and you see your space and a better utilization of that space. That's twenty-seven eighty-one. Uh, item number twenty is a painting upgrade, which is similar to what you see at the back of the, the space where you do the white trim around all the doors. There's approximately seventy-eight doors at, uh, right around forty-two dollars a piece, which adds up to three thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Part of the building was, uh, was, the majority of the building was monochrome painted and a portion of it was this type misunderstanding in the construction documents and the approvals that it should have been this way instead of the monochrome. Uh, e, in either case, uh, the cost would have been the same whether it was reflected in the original bid or occurred now. So it's looked, looked at as a betterment to the project. And then the final item is, uh, uh, the work necessary to do an ice maker install. Um, ice maker was picked up in the beginning prior to the bid to be put in. It was shown and illustrated in the project. But we did not have adequately shown the plumbing, mechanical and electrical hookup for that. So there's an additional cost to put that in. Uh, I am, um, responsible for four hundred dollars of that, which is putting the project in reverse to take sheet rock off the wall and repaint once that installation is done. The install itself is a betterment, but the taking the sheet rock off and the repaint belongs on me because our plumbing, mechanical and electrical engineers did not have that properly reflected on the plans at the time of bid. So, uh, that's three items. That's an add of eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, which brings the grand total to uh, one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty, forty-six cents. And then I'll be, um, reimbursing the county four hundred dollars of that.
Okay, so you're talking about, uh, request for item number seventeen, item number twenty, item number twenty-one for a total cost of eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents tonight.
That is, that is correct.
Hey, gentlemen, uh, what's your pleasure?
I'm fine with it, Mr. Chairman.
You're representing the, uh, Health Board. This is a Surrey County Health and Nutrition, uh, renovation. You're, you're good with it?
I'm fine with it.
Mr. Johnson? All right, I'm looking for a motion. Um, are you making that into a motion, Mr. Johnson?
Be glad to, sir.
All right, motion, Commissioner Larry Johnson, who, uh, entertained approving item seventeen, item twenty, item twenty-one for eighty-two hundred, ten dollars and fifty cents. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second, um, Commissioner Harris. Any discussion?
Yes, just one question. Uh, are we close to, where are we at in the contingency on this project?
The, uh, general contingency was at a hundred, hundred thousand. Uh, there was, there's a couple of line items that are signage, which was an allowance for six thousand that, uh, as it stands right now, would most likely go over that. Uh, there's an allowance for toilet partitions, which we do not have an estimate for at this time. And there is, uh, one more singular allowance. There's draperies and covens that we don't have a, an estimate for that either. That's to determine whether we can find something within its range that we put in as an allowance. And the item that I've held, uh, one of the items out of the three that I've held is for the, uh, smoke detection in the ductwork. And that was a, uh, add alternate item that was listed during the bid, but has not been selected because it wasn't determined initially that it was not functioning. But then as the, the project progressed, it was determined that it wasn't compatible and functioning. So that add alternate would have to be exercised.
Hey, gentlemen, any more questions, any more concerns, any more discussion turning the motion and the second to approve the eighty-two, ten, or question? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Chris, anything else?
That's all besides, uh, general county business. We do have a request for closed session for personnel.
All right, before we do that, uh, we'll take a few commissioner comments right quick. I know it's been a long meeting. Start with you on this end this time. Mr. Johnson, you have any comments?
I, I think I've said enough tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harris?
I think I've said too much.
Okay, I have said a plenty myself. Thank everybody for coming. We appreciate you long stayers for the long suffering. Thank you for being here. Uh, Commissioner Goins?
I'm good.
One, one item, uh, be quick. Uh, so thank you letter from Kenneth Williams, volunteer. He said, I'd like to thank you and the Bo, Board of Surrey County Commissioners for allowing the Surrey County Parks and Recreation Department to host the Y H E S T scrimmage event Saturday, February tenth, twenty-four. The facilities were in great shape and the staff did a wonderful job preparing for the event. Mr. Daniel White is a great ambassador for our community. Not affiliated with any of the team, shooting teams attending the event on February. I am a volunteer instructor for the North Carolina Wildlife Commission. Worked this event as a volunteer only. It was an honor to be able to serve as a volunteer. Thank you. I would like, also like to thank you for allowing us to open this event with a prayer. Sincerely, Kenneth Williams. That was, uh, about seven schools participated in a shooting, practice shooting event at Fisher River Park. It were a tenth and, uh, we had a good time and, uh, good turnout. Lot of folks, lot of, got a lot of young ones on, out there shooting and doing archery.
Okay.
Very educational also. They, they had to do homework.
Hookwork.
Yes. And I seen it on Surrey on the go. I enjoyed it. We put a plug in for Surrey on the go.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Anything else? Nothing. Motion to go to close. Mr. Bill Goins, looking for a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Johnson. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in close.
Okay, we're now back in session. Thank you for hanging around there Chet. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn Mr. Chairman.